Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall and to our City Council Chambers. This morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And this morning, I'd like to welcome Deacon Richard Longoria from St. Helena of the Cross of Jesus to the podium for the invocation. Deacon.
Almighty God, here are our prayers this morning as we pray for our elected officials and appointed and hired employees. Be with them all, O gracious God, as they journey daily through their work on behalf of all who live in our city named after your risen and glorious Son. May they put aside all friction and jealousy and show concern for the needs of all our people. May their daily decisions and work uphold the common good. Share with them your gifts of compassion and mercy for all and shine on them your graces
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
of insight as they work through the complexities of government that is fair and gracious.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. So that'll take us to Section E, our City Manager's Comments and Update on City Operations.
We ask this in the name of your Son and the Holy Spirit.
Mr. Zanoni.
Right, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council.
Amen.
Amen.
We do have two items today in the City Manager Report, and the first one is to give you
Thank you, Deacon. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag
all a briefing. You may have seen it either driving there or through some of their social media, but
will be led by Victoria Gonzalez, who is a senior at WB Ray High School, and she is
we have a new, or the community has a new RV park at North Beach, and it was constructed
the Colonel of the Texans Drill Team.
by the private sector, but the city did contribute in terms of a real estate lease
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
to make the project work.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
The owner-operator was going to be here to present this morning, but has some family
which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
situations, some health issues, so he won't be here, but Nieman is going to present instead. Nieman Young, our Assistant City Manager, has worked with the owner on the real estate
And now, please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag.
transaction that council ultimately approved.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
It's a good news story. It's really, it's the north end of the peninsula, so you see it when you're coming into the
Thank you, Victoria, and good luck in your studies.
city on the left-hand side, and it's quite a remarkable improvement compared to what
That's right. Ms. Huerta, would you please call the roll?
was there before. So with that, let me have Nieman come up and go over the highlights of the project,
Mayor Paulette Wahardt.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barera.
and I think we have a video as well.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Awesome.
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Gil Hernandez.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
As a historic gateway into the northern portion of our city, City Council has taken unprecedented
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Here.
efforts to revitalize the North Beach community with multiple investments and capital improvement projects across the community. Today, I'd like to talk to you about one such example, which is the Puerto del Sol RV Park. If we could please start the video. of our community. In response, the city secured a partnership with Blue Marlins Holdings LLC to renovate the facility. This was accomplished through the use of city incentives afforded through the North Beach Property Improvement Program. In addition, the city entered into a 30-year lease of two city-owned tracts of land with Blue Marlins Holding LLC. These 1.268 acres of space was absolutely essential to Blue Marlins' ability to secure the capital necessary to make improvements to the RV park. In turn, for approving the lease, stipulations required that Blue Marlin make $1.5 million of improvements to the park. Today, we are here to update council on those improvements, which include the elevation of the area to an additional four feet, new drainage, new electrical, and new concrete for 53 RV spots and additional parking. In addition, the facility has new landscaping, refurbished fishing piers, a heated pool, free high-speed Wi-Fi, onsite laundry, and of course, a beautiful view of the Corpus Christi Bay. The park is meant to serve for both tourists looking to visit North Beach and downtown Corpus Christi, but it's also serviced refinery turnaround workers who travel to the area for work. The park was open last week and has already received a significant amount of bookings. It's important to note that the park will be available for bookings year-round. Those interested in reserving a space in the facility can do so at www.northbeachrvresort.com. Again, the city is happy to celebrate this new development, and we want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Goodman, who couldn't be here today, and Blue Marlins LLC for a wonderful partnership that's only served to benefit not only the city, but especially the North Beach community. Thank you all. We'll stand by for any comments.
Councilman Roy.
Thank you. You know, I think this is a significant project on North Beach that was completed. I want to thank the council members that worked on this in the last council and the current council members. You know, this is a, we were able to bring a TERS to North Beach, which has been something that was needed.
Yes, sir.
And as a result, we're seeing projects like this that are being able to come to fruition, and it's exciting. It's good for North Beach, and it's good for Corpus Christi. It really does add to the allure and helped with a lot of problems over there. So again, thank you. I want to thank the city staff, the city manager, everybody that worked on this project.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I think that's all the questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nieman, for filling in for Mr. Goodman. Coincidentally, just for the public, we do have an exciting item on the City Council agenda to begin to advance even more forward the drainage on North Beach.
Okay.
We're going to talk later today about the linear park canal that City Council has agreed to do on North Beach. So Mayor, the second item on the City Manager Report is a highlight on Junior Olympic Boxing. And this next item is an exciting return event to the city. So this weekend, beginning Friday through Sunday, the Junior Olympic Boxing Tournament will be at the American Bank Center. This is the second year that we're hosting that tournament. Two weeks ago, on April 4th, we did hold a press conference to continue the exchange with the community. We want a lot of people to come to this event. We had an event here, as you can see in the pictures, on the sixth floor of City Hall with Councilman Roy and myself speaking to talk about the Junior Olympic Boxing Tournament. At that press conference, Councilman Roy, myself, and Coach Joe of Duke Adult Boxing spoke about the importance of this sporting event and the impact that it has on children and their families, not only in Corpus Christi, but in the South Texas region. This event, coming up this weekend, is an experience of a lifetime for many of these children, some that you can see in this picture, where they'll get to fight in arenas right here at our American Bank Center. There'll be thousands of people cheering them on, so this is an experience of a lifetime, as we said. The Junior Olympic Boxing Tournament begins Friday at 5:30 with an opening ceremony. Choir members from Toloso Midway ISD will be there to sing the National Anthem. Councilman Roy will join me in welcoming the boxers to the city this Friday at 5:30. We're going to have a female boxing champion from the U.S. Army. She will be there as well as part of the opening ceremony. The first set of boxing matches will start at 6:00 PM this Friday. Yep. So then Saturday, boxing continues at 1:00 in the afternoon. The tournaments will conclude Sunday with matches that will begin also at 1:00. So 5:30, 6:00 on Friday, 1:00 Saturday, 1:00 Sunday. You can go to any one of those events through any time of the day. The winners of this boxing event will advance to the national tournament at the end of the year with the opportunity to represent the U.S. Olympics internationally. Last year, the city hosted a record-breaking event, and this was the first time, I think, in many, many years that the city brought the event back. But last year, we had over 400 boxers, ages 8 to 16, and they made a large impact to the South Texas Junior Olympic Boxing Tournament history. So this year, we expect another record, just under 500 boxers will be registered to box. And the tournament will accompany, will be accompanied, those 500 people, the boxers, will be accompanied by over 216 coaches. Forty-five of those boxers are representing Corpus Christi over the weekend, and other fighters will come from the Rio Grande Valley, from San Antonio, from central Texas, as far as Austin and Laredo and Eagle Pass. The conference in our area covers a large section of South Texas. So last year, we had a record-setting 3,500 spectators, but we expect to outdo that again this year with over 5,000 spectators over the three-day weekend. So it's a pretty big event for the children, but for our community as well, because visiting families make a weekend of it. They'll be able to see our beautiful bayfront, go downtown, maybe even go to our beautiful Gulf-facing beaches as well. We do have a quick video we want to show you here. It highlights really two of the most instrumental people, Coach Joe and Coach Duke. So we're going to show that video real quick, and then I'll conclude with a few other comments.
So last year, when we pulled it off in 2022, it was an amazing opportunity to bring it back to Corpus Christi after being gone for 30 years. Nowadays, to bring Junior Olympics back into Corpus, it's awesome, because you don't know. You might be looking at a future world champion. You're going to be some kid from 8 all the way to 8 to 16, and for them, leaving it all in the ring and duking it out. You're preparing for the best. You've got to be conditioning from the basics all the way to learning your combo.
The excitement that the crowd gives takes a lot of courage to be able to step in the ring and do that, knowing you're going to battle against somebody, and it's going to be one winner, and it's all on you, giving it 100%.
And to show that courage and that they can, they have that will, it can be done, it's a whole different, I mean, that's what you want to experience, and that's something they're going to take with them for the rest of their life.
This year, we're looking to break records. We want over 500 registered boxers to attend, and we're expecting over 5,000 to 6,000 people in attendance for the three days. So it's a big impact for the city, and we love that because of the fact that it's a part of our community that we're here. I would like for you to come out, show your support to all these amateur boxers that have been training hard, get some ringside action. Again, you never know who the next professional boxer that's going to be performing here today that you'll see later in life.
One, two, three, go!
That's pretty good, right? Yeah, so those two individuals, Coach Joe and Coach Duke, do all this free. This is volunteer work that they do, as well as all the coaching staff at Duke Adult Boxing. That's an important thing to point out. Both those individuals have full-time jobs, and as do other coaching staff, but they do this as a nonprofit, helping individuals that really need something like this to get past what could be adversity in life. So we want to thank Coach Joe and Coach Duke for making this happen in our city and making boxing something that young children here can have access to. Without them and other volunteers, they wouldn't have this kind of leg up in life in their young ages. I do want to thank Sony Perrinell as well, Assistant to the City Manager. Without him, this may not be here as well. He single-handedly helped to get it organized last year. Seeing the success, even put more time in this year to help the coaching organization and working with our American Bank Center to get everything set up. Just a quick note on Duke Adult Boxing Club. It opened in Corpus Christi in 2018 with only about 15 members, and it was out of a garage. Four years later, the club expanded to a 1,200-square-foot facility in Baldwin Boulevard. There, young men and women are shaping, as we can see in the video, to become great leaders and learning life lessons that are important to us all, to include discipline, confidence, and respect. So we want to recognize South Texas Amateur Boxing Association. They're the ones that are actually putting on the event nationally and locally here. Duke Adult Boxing is the sponsor of the event. So tickets are available through Ticketmaster and can be purchased to go to our American Bank Center to see this, as little as $15. You can find more information at their website, which is www.ducatoutboxing.org. So dukeatoutboxing.org for more information. So this is a great opportunity to highlight our city, great for the kids in our community, 45 of them who will be competing, and they'll be joining close to 450 additional youth from across the South Texas region and hosting that boxing event right here in our great city. So Mayor, that concludes the two City Manager Report items for this morning. I did maybe just real quick, in case there's any questions, though, did want to highlight that Mud Bridge on New York Town will be opening this Friday at 9:00 for traffic in both directions. As we know, it's been under reconstruction after some issues were identified that became apparent after a sinkhole, but our local contractor, Anderson Columbia, has done great to not only beat the schedule, but bring it within budget as well. So this Friday at 9:00, we're going to hold a small event there, just to conclude our communication with the community. Every week on Wednesday, we have been briefing the community live every week or in a taped manner, and so we'll conclude that this Friday at 9:00. The bridge will then be open. They're finishing it up through Thursday. The rain will slow it down a little bit today, but they still can make their schedule, so it'll be open Friday for traffic.
Wonderful.
So Mayor, that concludes the items for this morning.
That's great news. Thank you, Peter. Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard that there was going to be some sort of spotlight on the opening of the boxing. The City Council is going to start it off, and it's going to be Roland versus Gil to kick it off. I'm just kidding. Coach Joe is great. They've done a great job. I want to commend them, and without their, you know, efforts, we wouldn't have these opportunities, so just want to throw a shout out to them, so thank you.
Councilman Campos.
Councilman Hunter, along those lines. I was actually thinking of maybe even having sumo wrestler outfits for some of us that could maybe attract an event there, but not to be, not a laughing matter, but I am so excited about this. I remember back in the day, back in the Coliseum days, I know some people don't like to bring up the Coliseum, but that was the time that I remember going to go watch the boxing matches, and they were fun. So I'm just grateful, and I hope that the city takes this time to go and support them. I'm looking forward to it. So anyway, just a shout out to this event, and thank you to our city and everyone else that made this happen, so thank you.
Councilman Roy.
You know, one thing that I was so impressed with when I went out to the boxing center is, number one, just to hear their story about how they started, but the other thing is, is that the kids themselves, the discipline in terms of, they're respectful, they're very personable, they have rules in terms of how they have to act, in terms of their behavior and while they're there and within the community. And one of the things that both Coach Duke and, one of the things that they said is that a lot of times our kids come in there, and they're so laid back and pleasant, and then they're, automatically, the opponent thinks that, okay, this should be pretty easy, and then all, and then it's over, and our guys are winners. So it was, it's good, it's good for the community. I look forward to being out there. I encourage everybody else, if you can make it, to come out and join us, so it's going to be a great event. Thank you.
It is, and I think, I can't recall, but was it last year? One of the boys went off to a whole nother level of competing, and it was one of the ones that we had here at this event, so very good, very good things, and of course, always dealing with children is the best, because mentors are needed, and sports is wonderful for them.
Right.
Yeah, wonderful. So that concludes your report.
That does conclude the report, Mayor. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we're going to go ahead and go into Public Comments, Section F. Mr. Rizley.
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Rizley. So individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comments. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents, and for those commenting in person, I'd like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of this meeting. Please speak into the microphone located here at the podium, and please state your name and full address prior to making your comment. There are two opportunities in which you can make comment. One is at this time, and the other is at the time that we actually hear the item on the agenda, so please choose one. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute, and for those commenting in person, there is a timer at the base of the microphone, and it will tell you exactly how much time you have left to speak. So when that buzzer goes off, if you will please wrap up the sentence, we would appreciate it very much. If you have anything you'd like to distribute to the council, if you'll please give it to Ms. Huerta prior to beginning your comments, she will distribute it to us, and then you can begin. So with that, we will start with Stephen Klepper.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Zanoni, City Manager, and Miles. Steve Klepper, 317 Sunset Avenue, District 2. You are being passed out a little one-page summary of some of my comments. This is information about stormwater fee. And as you know, you've all seen your bill that has the stormwater fee in there. The city manager, when the city manager implemented, he told you that the majority of people, residential customers, would not have a big increase, any increase in their water bill because stormwater charges were embedded in your water. It gets a little complicated, but, and we're taking those out and putting in a new stormwater fee. And that's true for the majority, I think, for the majority of customers, but for those people that use or are very water-wise and use 2,000 or less, as you can see from the top part of my chart in there, the table, their bills went up 35% the first year, and actually 44% when you consider the new fee that went up. Now, my concerns really aren't about stormwater fee. My concerns relate to information provided to you and to the public. I'm not sure each one of you were told this when it was implemented. Maybe you were, maybe you weren't, but I do know that the public wasn't. So my comments really have to do with transparency, public information, and I think the city can do a better job with that. With more transparency, more information, you build trust with the public. Former city manager Bill Hennings, who I was his assistant back in the mid-'90s, he understood this, and when he was the city manager, one of his tasks was to pay for the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, Texana Pipeline. How are we going to do that? Well, you know, a lot of people were against that pipeline, not just because of cost, maybe environmental, but a lot of people were against it. So to build trust, Bill asked me, he assigned me the task of looking, of leading a group to study cost of service. The question is, is every customer class paying its fair share? Are the industries being subsidized by the public, vice versa, all of that? And so we did that, and we did that before making any changes to water rates. We restructured all of the water rates, created the raw water pass-through that you have today. It was 25 cents then, but that's okay, things cost more. So my point is, we need to zoom back, we, the city, we, you, we, the city manager, needs to zoom back and assess the situation now before making any other changes to water rates to finance the D-South, whatever it is. Now, I know, I understand that you've hired new gen strategies. I don't know them, and I know what the city manager has said, large-volume water rates will be analyzed carefully, and that's great, and they need to be, but zoom back, follow the Bill Hennings approach of public information and transparency. And while you're doing it, I suggest you look at stormwater fees, too, and I've got some questions on the hand up, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. Carrie Meyer.
Mr. Zanoni. I'm sorry. Based on this gentleman's comments, can we make sure that the public is informed of the stormwater fees and just, you know, as a, well, we can at least meet with Mr. Klepper. That would be helpful.
Since you brought it up, Councilwoman, we had extensive community engagement, contrary to what Mr. Klepper said. So during our budget work sessions last summer, we had numerous exchanges with the community. We had informational sessions. We went out to all five city council districts and talked about the stormwater fee and the budget, so thank you for helping me correct that, because we did engage the community. It's part of our business model, is to engage the community, much like we'll be doing at your town hall meeting this week, right? So that's part of our business plan, where we encourage...
more. So my point is, we need to zoom back, we, the city, we, you, we, the city manager, needs to zoom back and assess the situation now before making any other changes to water rates to finance the D-Sout, whatever it is. Now, I know, I understand that you've hired new gen strategies. I don't know them. And I know what the city manager has said, large volume water rates will be analyzed carefully. And that's great, and they need to be. But zoom back, follow the Bill Hennings approach, that public information and transparency. And while you're doing it, I suggest you look at stormwater fees, too. And I've got some questions on the agenda. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. Carrie Meyer.
Mr. Zanoni. I'm sorry. Based on this gentleman's comments, can we make sure that the public is informed of the stormwater fees and just, you know, as a, well, we can at least meet with Mr. Klepper. That would be helpful.
Since you brought it up, Councilwoman, we had extensive community engagement, contrary to what Mr. Klepper said. So during our budget work sessions last summer, we had numerous exchange with the community. We had informational sessions. We went out to all five city council districts and talked about the stormwater fee and the budget. So thank you for helping me correct that because we did engage the community. It's part of our business model is to engage the community, much like we'll be doing at your town hall meeting this week, right? So that's part of our business plan. We encourage that, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Carrie Meyer. Yeah.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for your service to our city. My name is Carrie Meyer, 4401 Gulf Breeze Boulevard. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Number Nine in today's agenda about the LAN contract for $720,760. So it's $720,000, basically. And I think it's a really good thing. I'm here to say thank you and ask for your support for that agenda item. I wanted to just say that I'm pleased to see the city select LAN. I know there were several people applying for that. And the reason I am is because I think that they have a lot of history in doing a lot of the background work that's already been done, that's already been paid for. And so they have an intricate understanding of the difficulties and challenges that lay ahead in trying to solve the drainage issue there. So I think they've already got a huge head start. And I was also very pleased with the MIG company that Mr. Zanoni and you guys hired a couple of years ago to do the other drainage plan that you're working on now. So the city has continually moved this ball forwards over like the past five years. There've been some, you know, ups and downs and lefts and rights and all that. But we're going forwards. And I think that now to see it go to design, bid, and phasing of a linear parkway canal on the north part of the beach as Phase One, I think you're taking it into bite-sized pieces, made it real realistic. It's not a Cadillac anymore. It's more like a Ford. But we're happy with that. It's going to solve drainage, and it's going to be more like, you know, a place where people can gather and exercise and walk. And so the best of both worlds. Thanks for the commitment of the funding for the ARPA funding, so the American Rescue Plan Act funding. I appreciate that being given to this, as well as the other funding that's coming from the city. And the new council here, you know, is taking on, is carrying on what the previous council did, all that work. So, you know, I got here just a little late today, and I was sorry to have missed the RV park presentation that Assistant City Manager Neiman Young gave you, but I just saw a little bit of it online. And I think that that is really illustrative of how we're going to fix drainage on North Beach, meaning that the first thing that they did was bring their elevation up from like one to three, like a couple feet, not a huge deal. But that RV park used to flood a lot. And just bringing it up that extra two feet, and then grading it, and rebaring the infrastructure and all that, really made that night and day. Of course, the new pavement, the new trees, the new fence, the new pool, all that stuff is really nice, too. But elevating with non-structural fill is a huge part of any drainage project. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Ron Graban.
Ron Graban, 202 Surfside. Sorry for my appearance. I just drove in from, from the Jersey Shore. So quite a place, the Jersey Shore. And I am the president of North Beach Community Association, so it was important for me to be here to just underscore the community sentiment that we're very much in favor of what's happening here. And we thank you for the years and years of diligence in making this happen. We really appreciate this. Sorry, I'm a little foggy. And the, 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 the community has been involved in helping to formulate this, as well as council and city staff. And we appreciate that opportunity very much. Mr. Zanoni gave us the opportunity to come in and sit with the MIG people. And the meeting was extremely productive. They sat and they listened to us as a community. And we appreciate that. I personally appreciate that, and thank you for that opportunity. So I told you before, it takes 34 weeks for a chicken to lay an egg. And it takes time for some of these things to evolve. And I appreciate you're not pushing, not rushing, but you're taking time so you get it right. And this really is, is a great opportunity. You know, you all can decide where you want to take North Beach from here. Some people like the Jersey Shore. Some people like the quiet. But at least this gives you options as to which direction you can go. Because you solve the drainage problem, there's all kind of opportunities there. So as a community, we thank you and appreciate your diligence. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graban. Sean Flanagan.
Hello. My name's Sean Flanagan. I live at 4210 Hernan Street. I'm here because you've been getting a lot of information on the environment that's only one side of a narrative that actually has two sides. For instance, NASA, and everything I'm going to say, verify what I say. NASA satellite imagery shows that there has been a 15% increase in green mass in, on the globe in the last 20 years. We have 15% more trees than we had 20 years ago. How many of you know that? You don't. Because good news does not fit the narrative of continual economic or rather environmental disaster, especially if every environmental disaster you announced in the last 100 years hasn't happened. Second, you got two ironclad correlations, correlations you need to understand if you need to understand the environment. Number one, people have to have enough prosperity so they're not worried about starving or freezing to death before they start worrying about the environment. They get prosperous enough, they start worrying about their air and their water, et cetera, et cetera. Cool. Second thing, in the last 100 years, the single most important item of prosperity is the availability of cheap energy. If this city council wants to actually do something good for the environment, then you must do everything you possibly can to ensure the outflow of cheap energy and production from Corpus Christi. And that means natural gas and petroleum. That is the most environmentally sound policy you can pursue. That is what will help the environment globally. Third thing, consider the island nation of Sri Lanka. It's an island off the coast of India. It had a government that went into totally into the green sustainability movement. They got a 98% ESG score from the World Economic Forum. That government recently left town in a hurry, chased by a lynch mob of folks who'd been impoverished, impoverished, and their relatives had died of starvation as a result of their implementation of green sustainability goals. So when I hear folks say, hey, we need to have a Department of Community Sustainability, that's a misnomer. You need to call it a Department of Community Suicide. If you destroy the prosperity of a community in pursuit of fantasy, green, woke policies, not only do you cause poverty and disease, you cause environmental degradation. Don't. We've got plenty of good laws to protect our air and our water. We do not need a Department of Folks staffed by green environmental people who do not live in a fantasy world, that do not follow the reality of the real-world science. Please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. David Owen. And next we'll have Maggie Peacock, Adam Rios, and then Rachel Caballero.
Hello, I'm David Owen. I live at 401 North Chaparral. I speak today on behalf of our less fortunate neighbors, our fellow citizens who are experiencing homelessness. Ending homelessness is a national movement that is seeing success in communities, big and small, across our nation through a process promoted by Community Solutions, a 10-year-old nonprofit that drew upon 45 years of experience as America's housing stock became increasingly more expensive. Community Solutions is endorsed by the Texas Homeless Network, and its results, which are impressive, are tracked by the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. With your support, we can and will end homelessness here in Corpus Christi like they have in Abilene in Houston. What do I mean when I say we can end homelessness? It is not an absolute statement. If you have been to Houston, I am sure that you have seen, as I have, many homeless people still living on the street. The goal is functional zero, meaning homelessness is rare and brief. It means that more people come out of homelessness than fall into it. It is measured not by how many meals are served, blankets are given out, or shelter beds exist, but by tracking by name, the number of people experiencing homelessness versus those coming off the streets and being housed. This community needs permanent, supportive, affordable housing, something Houston has grown considerably in recent years, and we lack almost entirely. There is a growing awareness, both in the service provider and homeless communities in Corpus Christi, that we can end homelessness. I am involved in two groups dedicated to this outcome. Steve Kazanjan with Christa's Health and his Select Homeless Leadership Group, and Father Bruce Wilson's Bottom-Up Approach with his Ending Homelessness Team. The goal of ending homelessness is achievable with collaboration on a unified community plan and the political will to see it done. Will you please join me and add your voices and your political will to see this task accomplished? It is not only a moral and religious imperative, it is crucial for the economic development of our city and the overall well-being of our community. A lot of work still needs to be done, but we are moving in the right direction. Tony Reyes, with his new vision for Mission 911, is focusing on keeping people from entering homelessness. And with your support and commitment, we can and will end homelessness in Corpus Christi. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Owen. Maggie Peacock.
Hi, all. Maggie Peacock, District 4, 78412. Long time no see. Really glad to be back, and it's so nice to see you all. I would first like to express my gratitude and appreciation. A few of y'all have made the effort to meet with our team at the Gulf of Mexico Youth Climate Summit and advocate on behalf of the well-being of community members and the future of our bay. This is a major win for citizens, community organizers, and grassroots organizations who have been working tirelessly to secure something as bare minimum as a city environment and sustainability department. We are not woke. We just want a secure and safe future. That's all we're asking for. Now we must make sure this gesture in the city budget is not tokenized or swept under the rug, but actually implemented. As decided on April 6, 2023, it is a general consensus finally that our city like ours is one, our city like ours, one on the coast with industry in our front yard, must have funding like this. Let's utilize this momentum. And I kind of want to change a little bit about what I was planning on talking about today. Today I want to talk about a new study that was recently released, a scientifically proven study that was recently released by the Environmental Defense Fund in Texas A&amp;M University. It is a new index that analyzes neighborhood conditions, poverty, and health, and rates 70,000 US communities on their climate vulnerability that found that parts of the Gulf Coast subjected to flooding and economic and racial inequalities are most under threat. Industrialized communities in the Gulf South, meaning us, are most vulnerable and are the most vulnerable in the entire nation to climate change. And we are even mentioned directly in this study. A quote says, "Almost all of the most vulnerable communities are located along the Gulf Coast, from Mobile, Alabama, to Corpus Christi, Texas, a flood and hurricane-prone region with deep pockets of poverty, poor health, and economic and racial inequalities," end quote. Beverly Wright is an environmental justice icon and founder of the Deep South Center for Environmental Justice. She applauded the data collected in this index and stated that it is pivotal to ensuring federal funds reach the communities they are intended to. With that being said, we have access to federal funds at our fingertips. Indeed, the nation's largest piece of climate and environmental justice legislation was passed this past summer, also thanks to the relentless work of community organizers and people who call this place home. We can utilize those funds to make our city a cleaner, safer, and more equitable place. I don't have time to read over the whole study, but I can send it to each of y'all's inboxes, and I encourage you all to read through it. With all of that being said, a city and environmental sustainability department is the best interest of everyone. Investing in the environment is investing in us, and anyone who says otherwise is not listening to the science. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. Adam Rios.
Adam Rios, 7, sorry, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court, here in Corpus Christi. Obviously, I got sworn in earlier today. It's a position that I'm very proud to hold, and it's a position that I hope to see a lot of positive change happen in the future. Just, I know that there's some people watching this at home that are skate advocates like myself. Just giving a quick update, AEP is currently working at Cole Park Skate Park to put up the permanent lights. So we won't be using the generators anymore. That should be done hopefully by the end of this week, if not by early next week. And I'm really proud to say that I get to make this phone call once I leave here. I talked with Parks and Rec, and we are going to move forward with a, an improvement project at Salinas Park. And I want to say that we're doing that for under $50,000. So it's weird when you hear about $10 million projects and $5 million projects. This is going to be under $50,000 and let some local people get to work. In terms of the future of Parks and Recs, obviously, my goal is, and what I envision is what I hope everybody wants, is I want these to be what they usually were when I was growing up, which is multi-generational purpose parks with community centers and senior senators. And they were open to all cultures, all people, all residents. I actually got to go and witness this firsthand. I went to Carolene Park, and it was an adoptive park. And I was invited by indigenous peoples here in Corpus Christi, and they were there having a gathering, planting. And I saw Councilman was there actually watering the plants. And it just reminds me that as much as I like skate parks and BMX parks, there's a lot of different parks that need a lot of different things. But at least I'd like to think we're moving in the right direction. When I talked to my father this morning, and I told him I was going to be getting sworn in, you know, my father, he came out of La Cuarenta on the west side here. And so he remembered there was a time when public parks weren't necessarily public. And unfortunately, he remembers a time where considering your neighborhood or what your zip code was, kind of determined the condition of the park that you were going to have. Obviously, we're moving in a new direction. And a lot of that started, I was talking with my wife literally just over a year ago, about this time last year. I was coming, making public comments, and I got a call from the mayor's office. We want to talk with you about some of your ideas to improve that skate park, to make it safe, to make it sustainable. And that's sort of what started this entire journey. And in getting sworn in this morning, I'm hoping that the kids that I reach out to and the other people in the community that I speak with about parks, understand the importance of, you know, participating in the political process. Because I got sworn in this morning, and I was a guy that was literally showing up with a skateboard last year. Really quick, I just wanted to say something in honor of my son Atticus. We named him after Tequila and Bakingbird, obviously the noble Atticus Finch. And the way I felt today was something I want to read. It's a quote from page 149. "You rarely win in life, but sometimes you do." And I'd like to think that that basically meant that as long as you're doing what's courageous and doing what you think is right, you never really fail. And so that's the approach I'm taking in my position. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Rachel Caballero.
Bet you guys are happy that I'm not doing the machete initiative. Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock. I'm here to serve as a reminder of why you all are here. It's pretty obvious that some of you have been caught up in the politics of politics and egos are running rampant. Today, on item 823-0680, two people will update us on their ability or lack thereof to jointly make decisions for our community. One of these individuals is from the East Coast, Maine, and the other one is from the West Coast, California. Neither of them are Texans, and neither of them are from the coastal bend. Yet they are the ones assigned to discuss, to the discussions regarding the future of our water, the community's water. Last I checked, neither of these individuals were elected by the people, and neither have shown an authentic desire to protect our water, protect our way of life here, and to protect our sea life. I want to make it clear that no matter what these two charlatans conjure up, all of you elected officials will be held accountable, as you are finding out with the current legal hurdles so far. Cost studies haven't even been initiated. Just a bunch of politicians, overpriced- Just a bunch of politicians, over promising and under-delivering as usual. And for the record, we do not trust the majority of you. We, as a community, are tired of the constant money grab through useless fees on our water bills, astronomical annual budgets, unmonitored certificates of obligation, endless increases of tax rates, endless increases of property taxes, endless ordinances and fines, unmaintained infrastructure and streets, endless unnecessary new projects, and the constant adoration of industry. No matter what discussions are being held or being had between the city of Corpus Christi, Nuñez County, and the port of Corpus Christi, the water belongs to us, the people. As the burden carriers of the vast and irresponsible expenditures of each of the municipalities, we ultimately decide, stay out of our bays. Again, I am demanding that any desalination plant placement considerations be required and brought to the owners of the water for a vote. This is the only way to be truly transparent. This must be done. We will fight to protect what is ours at all costs, and we are organizing. We will protect our water, our community, and our way of life here. And any fake consulting firms providing data saying that it's 50/50 is a complete and utter lie, because if you actually spoke to the community, we do not want our bays destroyed.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. In statement of fact, today will be a presentation, it will not be Mr. Strawbridge nor Mr. Zanoni are making any decisions in terms of our water. And I will put that on record. They are here to make a simple presentation. This will be the first of many, multiple, because we are working on multiple different avenues in terms of addressing our water issues. So Ms. Caballero, I would, I would confirm to you that this body is the only body. Their jobs are to bring forth, or at least Mr. Zanoni's job, is to bring forth information based on direction. That is it. And we've got a lot of work being done on several different avenues of which, you know, we can take in terms of water, so thank you. Kimberly McIntosh. And then we'll have Rafaela Sanchez and John Weber.
Kimberly McIntosh, 422 Palmeiro Street, here in Corpus Christi. I didn't talk fast enough last time, so I brought you some handouts. The first page of the three pages is what I found online when I was wondering the interim wastewater rate. And if you review that, there is no mention of the interim wastewater rate. At the bottom, there's a very tiny blurb that talks about winter quarter averaging. It does not give you much information. The second page that you see, they have evidently heard our complaints, multiple, multiple complaints, and at the very, very bottom, they do now give you how many gallons are included in your interim average monthly wastewater usage, okay? And it tells you it's the $4,653. Yet again, you cannot get the rate. What is the interim rate? You cannot do it. The last page is a letter or an email that I received from Linda Garcia, who is a resolution specialist. I don't know how high that up is up, but I'm up to 16 phone calls trying to get this. I was on hold this morning for 27 minutes to ask a question, because my billing has been estimated in red since I've gotten here. I'm being billed the $52.20. So my question this morning was, since I have no winter wastewater average, what will my interim rate, what will the interim rate, will I be billed that for the rest of the year? Am I going, are they going to be basing it on the zero balance? You know, what, because my usage is showing estimated zero for three months consecutively. And they told me today that I will be billed at that zero rate. Now, that's fine, because I'm a very minimum user. You put somebody with 20 people in there, and they're really going to be using a lot of water. And the last thing I'm going to say, you guys go through this math, some kind of new math, because it didn't add up for me. I didn't get $52 out of it. You can see, when you do the math that's on there, it comes out much less. Now, if you move to Corpus Christi right now, say March, you will be billed this interim rate for 15 months before you go through winter water averaging, and then you have, that's December, January, and February, or December, January, February, yeah. And then March and April, you continue to be billed that interim rate. And then, like for me, I will get my first accurate bill of what my consumption is in June. So if you come now in March, it's 15 months, you will be overbilled almost in excess of $300. Now, that may not be much money to the average person, but there are people, you have to consider, when you're using an interim average, 50% are above that and 50% are below. And the 50% below are generally widows, widowers, and they're on a fixed income, and you're charging them 15 months over. Now, if you use more, you guys will reimburse.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. We appreciate that.
But if you're underneath it, you won't reimburse that money.
Thank you.
So just so you know.
Again, Mr. Zanoni, can you please address that?
I'm sorry, councilman.
Our, our speakers' comments regarding our wastewater, can you please address that issue?
Yeah, I had to step out for a moment, but our team has been listening, and I believe they contacted our site. We will, Mike Murphy and our team that deals with rates will contact her if they haven't yet.
Rafaela Sanchez.
Good afternoon, City Council. My Rafaela Sanchez, 549 Greenway Drive. And I had a water leak last Friday. I know that for a fact, you have a first response team that's supposed to show up to your, to the water leak. I never had a first response team show up. So the, I called in the work order at 9:17 in the morning. They showed up at 2 o'clock in the afternoon to do the water leak. But in that meantime, I'm right across the street, Meadow Brook, Woodlawn, and Montclair, where they're merging those three elementaries. There was water laying everywhere. Thousands of gallons of water were lost that day. Thousands of gallons. And my concern was, the first response team that's supposed to show up for that work order never showed up to evaluate. I submitted pictures so you could see how much water was lost that day. My backyard was flooded, completely flooded. The city crew showed up, they were amazed on how much water was out there. I emphasized when I made the phone call that there was, that it was a leak. It wasn't a little leak, it was a major leak. I have a brother with Down syndrome, Parkinson's, and dementia. He went out there and he says, "Ayawa." And I said, "I know, Peter, it's coming out of the ground." He said, "Shut off the water." Couldn't shut off the water. The city needed to shut off the water. The main lines are from Alameda to Greeley to shut off that main line. So from 9 o'clock in the morning till 2 o'clock in the afternoon, that water was draining. From 2 o'clock to 7, the city came off and shut off the water. So all the citizens in that area did not have water. Nobody was notified in my block that there was not going to be no water. You need to fill up your tanks with water or whatever you have to reserve. I think the people across the street that are doing the work for Montclair, Meadow Brook, and Woodlawn Elementary were more concerned about the leak than the city workers. I'm amazed that I, I am going to have a wonderful elementary across the street from my home. Wonderful. I, I'm sure of that, because I really advocate for the children in Corpus Christi. But if we ever get a leak like this, we need to address it. If we do have a team of first response that go to the home and evaluate these leaks, they need to take it a little serious. They did not show up. They did not. From 9 to 2 o'clock in the afternoon, I had nothing but water draining. And then they did show up, and they were really concerned. You have good workers. The city has very, very good workers. I've got to give you, because I even ordered pizza for them, so I did.
Thank you for doing that, Ms. Sanchez. And thank you for your comments. Do you want these back?
I don't, yes, maybe.
Yes, here you go. Look at them. But thank you for your comments. Mr. Zanoni, can we, that's alarming to think that much water was being out now. I don't know what the, what the situation was, but can we make sure we address that or what the protocol is?
Yeah, what we don't have is on the other side of these equations, so in an event like this, it's most likely there were numerous water breaks. We do have an aged water delivery system, so that's quite probably what was happening, is that they were addressing other leaks across the city. Once a leak happens, it doesn't mean we, the crews can go immediately, because they may be at another leak. And this first responder, I don't, we'll have to see if we have such a thing. I'm not sure if we do.
Right. And what I meant was just behind the scenes, if you would just please address, just to make certain that.
Yeah, they, Mike Murphy's on his way here, so if Ms. Sanchez, yeah, wants to wait around, he should be here momentarily, and he'll talk to her.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, John Weber.
John Weber, 609 Naples Street. Vision, the city of Corpus Christi organization will be the benchmark for all Texas cities. It's a great vision, don't you think? The mission of the city of Corpus Christi, Texas, is to deliver municipal services which meet the vital health, safety, and general welfare needs of the residents which sustain and improve their quality of life. As we work to achieve this mission, we will employ fiscal discipline, continuous improvement, first-rate customer service, and straightforward communications. In this work, we will tolerate no mediocrity. Ethical foundation, be honest, be fair, tell the truth, keep your word, exercise integrity. Understandably, because of who spoke after me last week, you may have been distracted and not able to reflect on the wisdom I shared last week relating to how some group thinking can be flawed at great expense to taxpayers and ratepayers. The definition of legacy is something transmitted or received from an ancestor or predecessor or from the past. Will the legacy of the city council be action to reduce water consumption by 20% within a year and averting a possible water crisis? Or will the legacy of the city council be to continue down the path of poorly-sighted proposed desal plants, which might not be in operation to avert a possible water crisis and cost the taxpayers and ratepayers millions of dollars more than the original estimates? This city council will determine its own legacy. Choose wisely. And as always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Dorothy Pena. And then, Ms. Warta, we have Shirin Del Souz.
That's correct, Mayor, by Webex.
Okay. Thank you.
Dorothy Pena, 2114 Meadow Pass Drive. So I, I am a community organizer, so I have the opportunity to speak with many different people. And a community I get the honor to work with is Hillcrest Residents Association. I'm here today to talk about the proposed desal plants and the concern of that community, and how overburdened they have been already with industry being in their backyard. Many of my friends in Hillcrest Residents Association have cancer, and their constant struggle to establish and be recognized for the things that have occurred throughout history in their neighborhood is very alarming and saddening to think of how much they have had to fight just to be where they are and not have equal opportunities within this community as other communities do. So proposing a desal plant in their backyard, I think, is very misguided and would be considered environmental injustice. I also want to just touch on the fact that when I was at the Corpus Christi Polymers Discharge Permit Meeting and asked TCEQ if they have done a study about what the effects of five proposed desal plants would be in our bay, they said they did not have the funding to do that. So do you have the funding, City Council, to do that? Because it should be done. And if that's the issue, who's writing the grants so that the money, so that you get the money to do this study? Because I think that that's very important information. As a community member, we want to know what the cumulative impact would be. And if TCEQ doesn't have the money to do it, or they don't think it's important enough to, I feel like the responsibility should then be yours, not ours. Now, we're trying to look up how to find grants to get money to do a cumulative impact statement on five proposed desal plants in our bay? That seems a little bit more than my personal time to do that. I, I will, but we're looking to you to guide, right? We're looking to you, because that is part of your job. You are the ones that have made that your job. You control the municipality. You control our water. I can't just go get water from a river. So please take that into account. Not only are the people who are supposed to protect our environment not doing it, but also communities like Hillcrest are at stake. And it seems like many people here today in, in the community are nervous and do not want desal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. And that'll conclude our public comment for this morning or afternoon.
But we have Ms. Del Souz still.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant in person.
Yes, okay.
So Ms. Del Souz, and then we're done.
Just one more. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Shirin Del Souz, 6030 Tapas Street. May you please play video. I'm here to advocate for protected bike paths. This is a protected bike path that we would like. This is a protected bike path that we would like. This is not a protected bike path. You may be wondering if the bike paths we have are sufficient, and it isn't. I'm telling you, this is not my opinion. The American Public Journal of Health claims that protected bike paths reduce injury by 90%. Look at a real-life example. You may think that Ocean Drive has plenty of space, but cars are always swerving onto the bike paths. You might be wondering, well, not a lot of people cycle. 12% of Americans don't drive. This includes students, low-income earners, minimum-wage earners, homeless people, people who can't get a driver's license for medical reasons, unable to get a driver's license for legal reasons, seniors, environmentalists, people who like to exercise, people who like to have fun. Well, you might say that not all these people cycle. Well, many do, and not all drivers are exclusively drivers. One in three Americans own a bike. When the city makes transportation plans, road plans, protected bike paths are never considered in Corpus Christi. There are estimated 12% of people who cycle, and they're left out. That's like 40,000 residents in Corpus Christi. No taxation without representation. If we can tax everyone equally, you should make reasonable efforts to accommodate for everyone's transportation needs. Everyone. This is not just a statistic. I see a lot of bikes, especially at schools, even elementary schools. Are we just going to ignore the safety needs of even children? I see even more bikes at a homeless shelter. A volunteer literally told me that a bike means the difference between getting a meal and starvation. I talked to many local cyclists, essential workers, a lot of seniors, and tourists. They all would like to have protected bike paths. Please check out my Instagram at IBikeCC as I share their stories. The FHA Design Guides for Protected Bike Paths are very easy to follow. They clearly state the measurements and design principles. For more information on why we need protected bike paths, check out my website that I made at IBikeCC.com. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Del Souz. So that concludes the public comment period, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Warta. So we have no board and committee appointments, consent agenda, we're going to go to consent agenda. So that's section I. We've got items three through seven. Would any council member like to pull any of the items? Items three through seven.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself still from number six.
So pull number six, then recuse. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so there being no one else, I will go ahead and, excuse me, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of item number six.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number six is case number zero one two three dash zero two, David and Nicole Gerlock in District Four. And that was only for you to recuse yourself, sir, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item number seven, or, no, not seven. Okay, briefing, so section K is our briefing. Item number eight, which is a presentation by city manager Peter Zanoni and Port of Corpus Christi executive, or chief executive officer Sean Strawbridge to report progress to date on how the Port of Corpus Christi collaborating with the City of Corpus Christi can assist in the city advancing seawater desalination.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Sean, good afternoon. We, uh, Sean Strawbridge and I, the CEO from the Port of Corpus Christi and myself, will be making this presentation. Mayor, we have a slideshow and a handout has been provided to you just a moment ago. So just to begin with some context, I'm going to, I'll begin the presentation, then Sean will conclude, and then we'll both be here for comments. So just as some background, less than 30 days ago, uh, this city council approved a, uh, a resolution that directed me, the city manager, to work with Sean Strawbridge, the CEO of the Port of Corpus Christi, in pursuit of desalinization and other water sources to provide long-term growth to the city. The, the resolution from the city council, uh, said that the, uh, Port of Corpus Christi should assist the city in those efforts. Uh, that same day, the, uh, Port of Corpus Christi commissioners approved an MOU, uh, that had some similar language, and you can see it here on the slide. The Port of Corpus Christi's MOU, uh, said that the city and the port should together pursue drought-resistant water supplies for the long, long-term growth of the coastal bend. Uh, the Port of Corpus Christi's MOU also said that the city's position, uh, as the regional water supplier, uh, remains, or that, that is the position. And then finally, the MOU set forth the expectation, uh, for equally sharing in all costs associated with the development of a drought, a drought-resistant water supply. Uh, the Port of Corpus Christi's MOU was, uh, was singularly adopted. The city council didn't reciprocate or approve that one necessarily, uh, just to put that on record. Uh, so we had two different bodies, uh, somewhat say similar things, which was that we want the city and the Port of Corpus Christi, through their chief executives, to begin a dialogue of how we can collaborate on water sources benefiting the region, uh, but respecting that the City of Corpus Christi is the regional water provider, distributor, uh, and planner. Uh, so as I mentioned, it's best, it's been less than 30 days. The resolution the city council approved also said that I should come back, or Sean and I should come back, uh, either today or the 25th of April. Uh, due to schedules, we're able to come today. And so today is a briefing, uh, to share with you what we've done so far. Uh, there's no action item, as the mayor said earlier. So on slide three, just as a summary of what Sean and I have done in terms of collaborating, and I should say what the city and the Port of Corpus Christi, through the, uh, executives have done. Uh, we have met, uh, several times in one-on-one meetings. In fact, that Friday after the Tuesday, Sean and I, uh, met and, uh, and spoke, and also did some site visits. Uh, I have taken a site visit to the Harbor Island location. We know that's the Port of Corpus Christi's preferred location. Uh, several council members also toured the site, and several port commissioners as well toured that site. Uh, Sean and I have spoke over the phone, and we've, uh, texted back and forth. So we have been, uh, communicating, uh, with each other, uh, to, uh, collaborate, to work together, uh, to ultimately present something to the council. And again, today is just an update on that less than 30 days' worth of collaborating. So, uh, as a reminder, the MOU that the city approved, uh, or, excuse me, the resolution that the city approved, um, has an understanding that the sites that we are looking at, or the water sources that we're looking at, include the, uh, city's Inner Harbor seawater desalinization site. It includes looking at the Port of Corpus Christi's Harbor Island seawater desalinization site. It includes looking at both the city and the Port of Corpus Christi's La Quinta seawater desalinization sites. Uh, both entities have permits for those sites. It also includes looking at the Barney Davis Power Plant Site as an option for a desalinization plant. And finally, it also includes, but is not limited to, uh, the Evangeline Groundwater Project that the city is, uh, well, uh, within, uh, works to evaluate that, that source. So, uh, some collaborative actions on the next slide to highlight is that, uh, we, we know, uh, that we could, we could start at any one of those sites, uh, that I just mentioned. We could delve into the Inner Harbor. We could look at Barney Davis. We could look at the Harbor Island Site. Um, we have begun, uh, to, uh, look at the Harbor Island Site. I personally wanted to get a better understanding of that site. I had never been on it and really haven't heard, in the four years I've been there, much about it. Uh, so we're reviewing that. I am first, uh, and that's not to say that that's the priority. It's just, uh, that's, uh, something that I chose to do with Sean. And so we've reviewed, uh, the Port of Corpus, uh, Port of Corpus Christi Harbor Island Site. Uh, but one thing we know on that site is that a rate structure, a cost for water, uh, to, to be delivered from that site is unknown. And so no determination could be made on any site yet, because frankly, in most of these sites, cost for water delivery, uh, is unknown. Uh, so, uh, one of the things that Sean and I talked about is getting a better understanding of, of one, what would be the rate for water to, uh, be produced from Harbor Island? And more immediately, how could we connect that site if we, if the council and the, and the port commission chose to select that site of the, of the many that we have an option, uh, to select from? Uh, how would that water be introduced or put into the city's distribution system? And what would that cost be? And so there's numerous cost variables that have to be developed for the Harbor Island Site, much as, uh, they have to be developed for the city's Inner Harbor Site or the Barney, Barney Davis Site. And so in an effort to determine cost for at least the connection to the city's distribution system, uh, the Port of Corpus Christi asked me, or Sean asked me, uh, if you had a firm, who would you recommend, uh, that would know your distribution system? And I did recommend Pape Dawson, who is working with the city on numerous fronts right now with respect to our water distribution system. They are the engineer of record that's working on our, uh, impact fees, and part of that impact fee study is evaluating our distribution system, our water distribution system, our wastewater, stormwater. Uh, so they have a very good understanding of distribution, our distribution system. Uh, plus they, uh, helped and were the lead, I should say the lead, not helped. They were the lead engineer in the, in the Vista Ridge Pipeline Project in San Antonio. And then thirdly, they're working with us on the Evangeline, uh, project. So they know our water system real well. Uh, so I recommended that to Sean, I believe, today at, uh, their commission meeting, uh, that contract was approved.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. Right, so Pape Dawson then will be studying, how can we, if we chose to, uh, connect a plant at Harbor Island into the city's distribution system? That's important because that'll tell us some indication of price. Is this, uh, is this within a price point that the ratepayers can afford? Uh, we don't have that information. So by moving forward in this way, at least at this site, uh, we can begin to have better information. So we, uh, while that is going on, we are continuing to pursue our Inner Harbor Site. Uh, that has not stopped. Uh, the permitting process that TCEQ is well underway, is ongoing. Uh, there was some action this past week that Mike Murphy and Esteban briefed me about earlier, uh, in the week. Uh, we continue to look, to pursue the La Quinta Site. Uh, we're continuing to evaluate Barney Davis. This council knows that we, uh, I authorize a, a small contract, uh, with, um, a firm to look at the pros and cons and the business model potential at Barney Davis. And we continue to evaluate Evangeline. In fact, we had a big meeting this past Friday on the hydrology and the quality of the water and the depth of the water. And so all of these projects that are here and others are still, uh, simultaneously being worked on. And, um, until we get more information on any one of them, nobody can make a recommendation on what is the best choice. Nobody has that information. Uh, but part of the collaborative effort that I am working on based on the council's direction is to get that information, uh, working with the Port of Corpus Christi through Sean Strawbridge. So, uh, as another collaborative action update, uh, we do know, this council knows, and the Port of Corpus Christi knows, the region knows, and Councilman Hunter knows, that the Water Development Board funding, uh, through Senate Bill twenty-eight is something that's out there. Uh, we know that the city has applied for and has been approved for funding for our desal plant, uh, through the, as they call it, the SWIFT loan. Uh, but there's talk at the legislature to substantially increase that funding amount or that funding availability. And we have heard from our legislators, both locally and up in Austin, that this area would, would best be suited in competition for additional monies if we collaborate. And so, uh, Sean and I have talked about that, that if, if there's a additional funding and if a grant opportunity, uh, or some type of funding opportunity is posted or made available, we have to talk about a collaborative, uh, application agreement, not two sides simultaneously submitting something. Uh, we have heard directly from our legislators and our delegation that that probably won't be the best result. So we haven't committed to anything, uh, but we have had that dialogue that probably a joint application would see better results if it's tough competition. Now, we know that we have, uh, taken some tours of the Harbor Island Site, and we've committed to the city council and the port commission, uh, that we should be looking at all sites. And so, uh, the Harbor Island tour for a few additional council members, uh, is scheduled for tomorrow, and that'll be an opportunity, if the council hasn't gone already, to see that location. It's really, uh, it's helpful to see the location, the proximity to the ocean, the Gulf waters, uh, just see the site. Uh, we also are scheduling tours of the city's location, the preferred location of the city, which is the Inner Harbor, uh, desalinization site. And so through correspondences that have gone out, we're going to schedule, we are scheduling tours for council and the port commission over the next three Fridays, beginning this Friday, April twenty-one, April twenty-eighth, and then also May fifth. And so that tour is a little closer, uh, to City Hall, uh, but we'll get you details on that. So far, no council members have selected this Friday, uh, but we do encourage the council to pick one of these three Fridays, uh, so that you can see the site. There'll be a little bit of walking. Uh, we want to walk down onto the site so you can see the proximity to the Ship Channel, and that would be the water source of that location. And then we know that Barney Davis is of interest to the city council, and so site tours and talking to their representatives would be the next thing to schedule. We don't want to overload schedules, so we're kind of taking it, uh, incrementally, step by step. So Harbor Island will be completed tomorrow, and then we'll have the next three Fridays to, uh, view the, uh, the Inner Harbor.
Peter, if I may, the, um, to give you that update on the, on our inner harbor permits, the requests for informations were, requests for information were formally submitted to TCEQ last Tuesday or Wednesday. So they now, um, have all of those and have 30 to 45 days to, to respond. So that's where that is.
Right. Thank you for that, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that concludes my portion of the presentation. I think the, you know, in summary, and then Sean's going to, uh, since several council members and several more will take tours of Harbor Island as a learning experience. It's not as a, to say that's where we're going, but, uh, to learn about it so we can be more educated. Uh, Sean's going to conclude the presentation by talking a little bit more about his business model that they have there. Uh, but I wanted to conclude by saying that, and then I'll, I'll be here for questions as well, that, uh, what the council and the port commission has done is said, let's, let's talk together. Uh, let's have the two sides talk together through their chief executives, and that's what Sean and I have begun to do. I've met with Sean several times in my four years and his eight years here. Uh, but I think that the collaboration, uh, has merit and can really benefit, uh, the City of Corpus Christi, uh, the region, the Port of Corpus Christi. And I think, uh, additional funding that is competitive, uh, is best available to us if we collaborate. And so we have some great choices by working with the Port of Corpus Christi. That just brings one more choice onto our table, uh, to see what is the best in terms of pricing, uh, reliability, uh, volume, all of the above. So, uh, with that, I'm going to turn over to Sean, who's going to talk a little bit more about Harbor Island.
Thank you, Peter and, uh, Madam Mayor and council members. It's good to see you. It's been a long time since I've been, uh, here at the, at the podium, addressing you. So thank you for having me back. First and foremost, I know that Peter being born in, in Maine and me being born in California, I think collectively, we've been here over 40 years in Texas. I, I know my saying is, uh, Californian by birth, Texan by choice. I think Peter's is, he got here as fast as he could, almost 30 years here in Texas. So I consider myself a Texan, and I'm proud to be a part of this state and certainly this community, irrespective of where I was born. Uh, I am truly excited about this project, uh, because we have a problem. And I think that's the common denominator that has really gotten us to where we are today. Uh, and, and that is that we are currently 100% reliant on surface water for both residential ratepayers and industrial ratepayers. Uh, we see that there are significant water shortages that are predicted across the state. There was a report that came out last year by the Baker, excuse me, the Baker Institute at Rice University that prognosticates if we do nothing to our current supplies, and you forecast the growth in demand from now to 2070, we will be over 3.3 billion gallons per day short of water. That is a very disconcerting statistic that came out of that report, and I certainly encourage you to, uh, to look at that report. That's on page three of that report. That's what jumped out at me. So clearly, something has to be done. And I think where our common bonds are is that we need a drought-proof and sustainable water supply for the coastal bend and for the Corpus Christi region. It needs to be cost-effective. It needs to be environmentally sound, and it needs to use state-of-the-art technology. Uh, when we look at what we have, uh, been, uh, working on out at Harbor Island, we started with a 50 million gallon a day facility. And the reason for that is we started this process back in 2017 for reasons that many of you are aware of. We thought the 50 million gallons a day was going to be enough. Here we are five years later, and we are duly concerned that 50 million gallons a day will not be enough, not only for our needs today, but certainly for the growth opportunities, the economic development opportunities that we have to create careers here in this area. Not just jobs, but careers where people can put their kids through school and pay their mortgages and, uh, and raise families here. Um, and it is going to be dependent on water. And we talk about the impact to the environment and the impacts to health. The biggest negative social determinant of health is poverty. And if we have an opportunity to create more jobs and create more careers here, and we're stymied by something that was well within our control, I think we all, as leaders in this community, agree the time is now for us, and it's incumbent upon us, uh, that have been entrusted by this community to be leaders, to do something about that. Um, we certainly see that, uh, the permitting process, if we can go to the next slide, has been, uh, much more lengthy. Uh, as a, somebody who has spent a fair amount of time in California, I certainly thought that we could do it faster than California could. Uh, we're probably on pace now to match California in terms of the time it's taking to get the permits. Uh, some of the permits that are required, uh, a Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit for the outfall, and that's the discharge of the hypersaline effluent. That permit has already been issued by the TCEQ. We have that permit in hand. Uh, we view that as a legally issued permit, uh, and, uh, barring any, uh, any court injunction, uh, that permit would allow us to begin construction of the discharge facility. Uh, we are, have an application for a submerged land lease for the intake with the Texas General Land Office. Uh, we have an easement application for the intake tunnel, also with the Texas General Land Office. We have a water rights permit that has been submitted to the TCEQ, and the TCEQ has, uh, determined that it is administratively complete, and that's currently in process. And we also have a permit for what's called a 404, or we call it a nationwide permit with the Army Corps of Engineers for both the intake and the outfall, because they, these, um, this pieces of infrastructure would go across or underneath federal channels. So it does give jurisdiction for the Clean Water Act to the, uh, United States Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, some of the permit application requirements included site layouts and designs, intake and discharge technologies and routes that would be contemplated, water quality sampling and modeling, which we've already agreed to significantly more stringent water quality standards at Harbor Island than what is currently in existence in California. And the reason we've been able to do that is because we think we can be better than California. Uh, one example is, we've agreed that the salinity within 100 meters of the discharge cannot be more than two parts per thousand above the ambient salinity in that environment. In California, it's two parts per thousand within 200 meters of the discharge. So in essence, we are theoretically twice as stringent as California, and we did that because our, uh, modeling, uh, by our subject matter experts, uh, led us to believe that we could meet that stringent water quality standard. Um, we've done tremendous environmental and ecological assessments and feel confident about the location. Uh, next slide. Permitting, uh, where we are in terms of permitting materials and status, uh, our experts have developed research-backed reports and plans to support, uh, support research-backed reports and plans to support robust permit applications, including water conservation and drought contingency plans that are required, impingement and entrapment reports, threatened and endangered species studies, basis of design reports, conceptual designs, construction methodology and conditions. And some of the, some of the, the status of where we are, I've already mentioned that. One in particular is the EPA has recently taken interest in the discharge permit that was issued by the TCEQ. The TCEQ and the EPA and the port have been in significant discussions. We believe that, that the, the concerns of the EPA will be addressed and will be met sufficiently for the EPA to allow for the recognition of the full permit. Right now, the EPA has said they consider it a draft permit, not a fully valid permit. And of course, until we get full concurrence from the federal government, we're going to continue to hold off. But the TCEQ has taken the position that we have a good, strong administrative record. They have, they are upholding that record, including the two years that we went through the State Office of Administrative Hearings with two administrative law judges, making a ruling in favor of the, of the issuance of this permit to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, with, of course, some modified standards, one of which was the standard that I mentioned to you. The other was some significant monitoring, which, of course, we also agree to. Right now, we have had some consultants that have given us some initial costs for intake and outfall, both shallow and deep, both onshore and off. Also, an intake tunnel, because of the amount of water that we're talking about, we think the facility needs to be built for larger than 50 million gallons a day, at least some of the base infrastructure. If we're going out into the Gulf for intake, it should probably be intake for something in the 100 or 150 million gallons a day of production, because you only want to be able to put that infrastructure in place, say, once in a generation. It's going to be much more cost-effective, we think, to do it now. And we think that the state, through the state participation fund, which was legislation that was enacted in 2017, not funded, but enacted, the state has basically taken a position that they would consider making funds available to increase capacity of water facilities with state funds, knowing that we've got needs today, but we're also going to have needs tomorrow. What you don't want is to build a facility only, only to have it fully subscribed once it's commissioned. You want to think about that growth. And that's where we really think that Harbor Island does provide an opportunity for that growth, because it's so close to the Gulf of Mexico and the size of the property, it provides some scalability that perhaps other locations that we certainly have looked at may be limited on their, on their scalability. So maybe I'll go then to next steps, as Peter and I have spent a lot of time talking about, how do we get to a place where both of our governing bodies are satisfied? So we think some next steps are, obviously, the initial evaluation of the city conveyance interconnect routings, and that includes size, capital costs. Mr. Zanoni mentioned Pape Dawson. We actually, today, our commission approved a 250, not to exceed $250,000 contract with Pape Dawson to, to evaluate the, the interconnects from Harbor Island, both through northern routings and southern routings down Mustang Island. I'm pleased to report that the representative from Pape Dawson, Cara Tackle, is actually here in the audience. And already, I think some of you may be familiar with her, with the great work that Pape Dawson is already doing on behalf of the city. I think this is a great way for the port to demonstrate that not only we committed to working with the city in data exchange, but we're also going to spend some of our money, not taxpayer money, because we are not a recipient of taxpayer dollars. We generate our revenues from the services that we provide our customers or the lands that we lease our customers. So these initial costs are not on the back of any taxpayer, including myself, here in Corpus Christi. I live in Corpus Christi, and I'm a citizen of, of Corpus Christi. No citizen of Corpus Christi will be taxed for any of the initial evaluations of the city conveyance interconnect routings that I mentioned to you today. That will be fully on the back of the Port of Corpus Christi. We certainly want to look at capital cost estimates for a 50 million gallon a day facility and perhaps 100 million gallon a day facility. All of that then goes into your operational cost modeling, because if you're going to have some debt loaded on top of that, that's a below-the-line cost, below the line from your operations cost to service that debt. So we're going to need to first identify what's the capex estimates, and then what's going to be the operating expenditures, and what then will come out the bottom, we hope, is a, a rate structure that, that we hope will be competitive for at least some of your ratepayers. I do want to remind everybody that desalination is not a silver bullet. And we've been to Israel now on a couple of occasions, and Peter and I have talked about inviting some of you to go to Israel with the port as your sponsor. The port regularly takes elected officials from the local community and certainly from the state when we're talking about these types of very important economic development initiatives. Some of you have already been on trade missions with the, with the Port of Corpus Christi. Israel is an interesting case study in where they've used desalination, they've used conservation, they've used reuse. In fact, their reuse is 87%. In the nation, we average 1%. Here in Texas, we're a little higher, but we have a lot more to go in terms of reuse. So I just want to impress upon you and certainly your constituents that desalination is not a silver bullet. It's one of many in the basket that we're going to have to address. And we heard from, from the, the retired chairman of the Water Authority, the Israeli Water Authority, who was kind enough to come to Corpus Christi and share his time with us. We do have that presentation on our YouTube channel. If you want to go to the Port of Corpus Christi's YouTube channel and watch that, I found it to be very instructional and hope that, that you did too. So it is going to be an expensive proposition. But I will say this, too, it's our belief that the region end market demand analysis does not go far enough, and that's something that Peter and I have talked about. We're going to share more information. We have not had, been, had a seat at the table in terms of providing region end with regular updates with all the economic development activities that we're engaged in. We think that the region end forecast is a little light, and we're certainly encouraging them in this next update to engage us. And certainly, we're going to share our information with Peter as well. And lastly, before we open it up for any questions, I just want to, I want to commend Peter for his timeliness. He certainly heard what you all had to say. We, we drove out together. We had a nice chat. We have a hell of a lot more in common than, than not, and, and it's been a pleasure to work with him and, and the rest of his team. And we're, we're looking forward to really working together arm-in-arm on this important initiative for the good citizens of the coastal bend and the state of Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strawbridge.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes our presentation.
Ms. Campos.
I don't believe it. The first one, for the light. Or maybe I do believe it. Thank you, Sean. I'm so glad you brought it up about, you just mentioned about having a seat at the table, right? You know, this is what's been missing for the community, for the people, is that we don't have a seat at the table. Because of the structure of how a water alternative is going to be implemented, it's really not fair or not just that the citizens, the 500,000 people that the city provides water to, does not have a say. You know, we can't, we're not voting on this. This is what's missing. We, like you mentioned before with Abraham Tenney, and I'm so glad that I, I went to that, that talk, that he mentioned all these other things, and you've mentioned this already, how much Israel reuses and how, and I would like to ask if the port could extend the comments. The talk of Mr. Tenney is up on YouTube, but what's missing is the input or the question and answer portion. I'd like, if you could put that in there as well. But the point is that we, we don't have a say. And, and it's, y'all don't even know what the cost is. We, that's one thing. One of the issues, right, is the cost. The other is the environmental impact. And the rest is, I, I understand, we, we need jobs, but how many times have we been promised that in the past? And have we ever done anything to this magnitude? What was the last time that we did a project like this, that the city did? That we could, you know, well, I guess it would be the Mary Rhodes Project? Is that, would that be the last?
That's probably the last, yeah, that's probably the last major initiative, Councilwoman, late 80s.
So, you know, the point is that we need to try everything else before we, you know, attempt desalination. And then I also noticed on your presentation that it doesn't, it didn't even mention conservation. You know, you mentioned the, you know, the Barney Davis, the La Quinta, you know, you know, all these other, for desalination places, but never does it ever mention conservation, water sources. So we've had, you know, Mr. Weber come and speak to us about the city doing at least 20% right of conservation, and, because even if we were to do it now, let's say, the city were to approve this, you would have everything that you needed to move forward. When would this start? And, you know, I mean, of course, there's other questions, but do you all know? Do you know how fast this would?
So is the question, how long until you could start producing desalinated seawater?
Yes.
So your, our, our belief is, once you have all the permits, and I don't believe that we'll have all the permits issued until next year, the EPC contractor that we have talked to, who has experience in building these things, which is a known company here in the coastal bend, a company called Keywit. Keywit has indicated that it would be at least 36 to 40 months for construction of a facility of this size. So knowing that we've got an issue today, we may already be behind the curve, which is why, to your point, we have to start looking at conservation and reuse now, I think. That means we're still five years away from having any kind of a, a desalinated solution.
Yeah, that's at that, at that location. The city's is a shorter timeframe, because the city's plan in the inner harbor is a 30 million gallon system. So it's a shorter timeframe. I think the, based on what we know right now, excluding Barney Davis, because we're still, we have, we're still vetting that side out, the soonest available water is probably through Evangeline groundwater system, and that, they've told us is about two years. But that, some people think that's optimistic. So the answer to your question is two to five years.
Okay. And, and I am grateful for taking that tour to the Harbor Island, because one of the first things that I noticed was the dolphins, the dolphins jumping in the water. And I'm like thinking, are we going to be risking, you know, the, the food that they need to continue to live there? What is your answer there?
We, no, we don't, we believe that the, the environmental impacts of that location, given the technology that's being contemplated, given the acute hydrological action that exists at that location, given you have a confluence of four tributaries there, you've got the Gulf of Mexico, you've got the, the primary Corpus Christi ship channel, you've got the Aransas Channel, and you have the Lydehan Channel. And so right at that location of the discharge, there's a very acute hydrological action. In fact, the depth there is 90 feet, and that's not man-made. That is natural 90 feet because of the scouring impact of that acute hydrological action. So by placing the discharge diffuser, which actually reintroduces the hypersaline effluent in a, in a fashion much like a jet bathtub, it has, at 60, at 60 feet, it actually allows you to use both 30 feet below and 60 feet above, as well as all of the water that's out. So that's why we believe we can hit that, that 100 meters, that the, the saline, the effluent not exceeding two parts per thousand within 100 meters because of the, the unique nature of that location. So no, we do not believe that it will have any, anything but a, but a small marginal impact on just a very small area of, of the environment there.
But we all do remember that Mr. Tenney did also say that nothing, that he would not recommend anything on the bay. And again, you know, I know you're saying that it's, you take out the discharge 100 feet, right? Is that what you?
100 meters.
100 meters.
For the, for the threshold.
Okay. But anyway, I, I'm glad that we're having, that we continue to have these discussions, right? I mean, but what's missing again is the people's input, right? We, the people do not get, and I know you can't answer that, you, you have, but the correct thing, the just thing would be to have the people vote for this, because this would affect, again, the 500,000 customers. So I would challenge my council members to do this to the public, to give them an opportunity to vote on a water alternative. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, Sean, thank you for your time and effort. I know we had somewhat of a contentious council meeting that time and to get to this point, but I think it's, it was worth it in terms of getting us to communicate in a, in a better fashion and be able to work together. You know, I, I've been on record saying that I've, the more I looked at it, the, the more appealing the Harbor Island position, location looked at because of its proximity to the Gulf of Mexico. And I do share some of Councilman Campos's concerns, which is amazing, right? The, about the, about discharge in the bay. I'd been voting against it specifically because I had not gotten the long-term modeling of salinity accumulation within the inner harbor. Now, it would probably be better in the, in the, in La Quinta, because water movement's greater there, but still some of the same concerns about, about salinity accumulation in a small body of water and the lack of water movement. From our, from our own technical document done by Plummer, commissioned by Freeze and Nichols, the water movement is .05, 0057 meters per second, which is half a centimeter per second, which is about 2 meters an hour. So it's, it just, you don't have the water movement or the depth in that area. And there was really very little explanation. So with regard to the inner harbor, I, until we get some of that modeling or until we get some justification as to how that salinity dissipates, it's hard to, to approve that. Going forward, you know, this, one of the things that we wanted to do, and I, and I thank my fellow council members, Councilman Suckley and Councilman Pusley, about, about working to do this, is to get really some more information and work together, not only for, to get the information on cost with regards to Harbor Island, to connect to our, to our distribution system, but also, so we look like we're working together, at least at the, at the state of Texas. You know, we've kind of looked kind of silly over the timeframe for how the, the dynamics of things have happened here within, within the coastal bend between us and the port. So I think that will change the narrative in Austin with regards to funding opportunities, especially in this session. You had, you had mentioned it during your presentation. So that, I think, will help in that aspect, whether we do desal or groundwater, whatever that may be. I think having us work together in unison is a lot better than, than where we were just a few weeks ago. Last thing I want to cover is, there's another concern we, we haven't talked about. Like I said, you can never look at desal in isolation. There's other things that you have to consider. Mary Rhodes Pipeline is close to its end of life, and where would we be without Mary Rhodes, which the voters actually denied back, back in the day, which we actually worked in partnership with the port for Mary Rhodes Pipeline with Frank Brogan, who was the engineer for, for the port. So I think we have a history of working together. We should work together in the future. It benefits both not only us as residents of the coastal bend, but also the port's customers. I think we all benefit from working together, regardless of where this turns out, whether it's desal wastewater reuse, which we got that presentation on the RFI a couple of years ago from Veolia. There's, there's lots of opportunity here for us to work together, and it does, it, I think this is a better solution than what we, than where we've been. So I commend you for, for taking it, Peter, for taking it and, and actually running with this. So I hope that we look at this as a, as a positive step going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I had just a couple of questions about this, kind of follow-up questions from your presentation. I'm going back to page seven, I guess. It was entitled Permit Materials and Status, and you were talking about Port of Corpus Christi experts develop research-backed reports. So one of these is dealing with impingement and entrapment report. I'm wondering, who was it that conducted that report, that, that study? Is it somebody from within the? That, that study? Is it somebody from within the port or somebody outside of the port?
Yeah, no, uh, uh, Councilman Klein, that was a, a third-party subject matter expert. We can certainly not only get you the name of the individual, we can get you a copy of the report as well. We had a number of individuals that had worked on sea, large-scale seawater desalination. Uh, we wanted somebody that obviously also had a familiarity with the, uh, the, uh, the native species here, uh, when we're talking about, uh, impingement and, uh, and entrapment. Uh, so, having the two together, uh, we had some folks that worked on, uh, on, uh, large-scale desalination in, in Australia, uh, both Perth and Sydney, uh, also in, uh, Spain, uh, Israel, and California. So, we'd be happy to get you not only the name of the subject matter expert and make him available for any questions that you have, but get you a copy of the report as well.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I actually, I have the same question, I guess, about the next bullet pointed below that regarding threatened and endangered species as well. Um, want to know kind of who was that conducted that, that study or that report, put together that report as well. And, um, again, you might be able to get this to me, I guess, with regard to the other information. If you involved, uh, I guess it would be U.S. Fish and Wildlife, uh, would be, I guess, would be considered a subject, uh, expert in the area, in that subject. Uh, and then, uh, the Texas equivalent, I guess, to that as well.
Was there a question in there?
I, I just wondered if they, if you're, and you're looking at who is that submitted the reports on threatened and endangered species? If you involve the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, or other agencies that are pertaining to, pertaining to endangered species.
So, because, uh, when you talk about a, uh, a, uh, Texas, um, uh, you know, a TPDES, uh, permit, primacy has been given by the EPA to the state of Texas through the TCEQ to issue those permits. At a national level, that's an NPDES permit. Here, it's a TPDES permit. Uh, so, we went through the TPDES process that also included a tremendous amount of public comment, uh, public meetings, uh, as well as it being referred by the TCEQ to the State Office of Administrative Hearings, where it went through a lengthy judicial, uh, review as well. Uh, and so, again, all of that is public record. And we certainly, the Protestants had used some of their subject matter experts. We used some of ours. And I think we were able to successfully demonstrate that their concerns were, um, not accurate. I mean, the concerns are accurate. We don't want to dismiss anybody's concerns. But the data that they were using and the assumptions that they were using, we were able to appropriately, uh, uh, demonstrate that our assumptions, uh, were a more likely case. So, again, all of this is public information, and we'd be happy to give you all of that, including the, uh, the public record. We think we have a good, strong, uh, administrative record for this process. And, um, and, and all of those agencies, when you're in public comment, they also can weigh in. Some did, some didn't.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, the, the larger picture, I think, here is, is just, um, I think for the, the public, there, there's, um, uh, I'm going to say a limited amount of trust, uh, in, in the process of this, as it's gone up to this point, maybe going forward then as well. And so, the more kind of transparency we can provide, the better. I think that would be very, very helpful. Um, I had just a couple of other quick questions as well. I think, I think, quick.
So, while you're, while you're doing that, I just want to draw everybody's attention that we do have a website. Uh, it's, uh, harborisland.info. Uh, and we've put a tremendous amount of this information on that website already. And if there's additional information that you seek that is not available on the website, please let us know, and we'll certainly place it on the website. We're a public agency, just like the state, just like the county, and just like the city, with a commitment to transparency and, uh, and, um, and, and earning the confidence of the community. It's easy for folks to not trust, but they have to also do the work.
Right.
If they don't trust and they're not willing to do the work to find the information, you know, nothing we can do about that. We can make it as available to them as we possibly can. If somebody does an open records request, we'll give them all the information. If they want to go to the website, if they want to go to the TCEQ's website, or the State Office of Administrative Hearings website, all of the information is available. It is available for the public. We can certainly do what we can to try and make it easier for everybody.
Sure. Yeah, Councilman Klein, the same is true for the city's efforts. We, I think, over two years ago, created the standalone website, and everything we've done is, is placed on there. And, uh, you, the prior, the prior council, we've had numerous community engagement sessions, even during COVID. Uh, so, we have, we, as we do in all of our business, uh, uh, get public engage, get the public engaged. And we didn't, we continue that also through our desalination efforts to include town hall meetings, virtual town hall meetings. We actually stopped our process to re-engage the community yet again, uh, when we had a change in the council. So, and we do have our dedicated website, just to repeat.
Okay. Um, the other question I had, um, is, um, regards the discharge site for the Harbor Island, uh, project. This is going to be, I guess, I'm going to call it the ship channel. I guess they're, uh, between Harbor Island and Port Aransas, uh, right into there. And you talked about the water exchange there. I'm wondering, uh, there again, um, I guess it's a similar question. Uh, who was it that conducted that study to determine the rate of water exchange into there? Whether those are port employees, whether it's an outside source, a third party? Uh, uh, again, I think in the interest of trying to developing, uh, establishing trust with the public, that information would be good to have as well.
Yeah, so, uh, first of all, it was all done by third party. Uh, not that we don't have qualified experts, subject matter experts within the port. Going back to your point about trust, uh, we wanted to make sure that we were beyond reproach. Uh, and so, these are, these are scientists, these are coastal ecologists and marine biologists, who they have, they, they, they don't have any political skin in the game here. They're here, uh, with their reputation on the line to do the good work that, uh, that they do. Um, I am an accountant by trade, uh, and a finance guy, so I really don't know a lot about, uh, when it comes to science. So, I asked them, give it to me in a manner in which I can understand. And just to give you an idea, the water exchange out there is so acute, it turns over twice a day at that location. Turns over twice a day. The middle of the bay turns over about 1.4 years in the middle of the bay. So, much different. This is not a location that's in the bay. People say it's in the bay. It's not in the bay. It's in an active ship channel that, where you can have line of sight to, to open ocean. And for them to give it to me in a manner that I could understand, we're introducing 96 million gallons of effluent per day. That's what the permit is allowing for, 96 million gallons. The amount of water exchange over that same period of time, uh, if you, if nine, if each gallon was a second, uh, that would be three years that we're introducing into a body of water exchange that is 15 centuries. That's what we're talking about, three into 1,500. That's how much we're talking about in terms of, uh, in terms of the water, the water turnover there, which to us is why there is such minimal, if any, economic or ecological, uh, um, impact there. Um, it's already having that high velocity of exchange already, and the natural, uh, uh, migratory, uh, uh, marine life there is already familiar with large salinity changes as well. We've found salinity there as low as 18 parts per thousand and as high as almost 50 parts per thousand. So, just natural salinity dynamics change significantly as well, which is why, when you want to, uh, agree to a certain water quality standard, it has to go with the ambient, because you can't control the ambient. The ambient is controlled by Mother Nature.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Campus.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to the point of, of my fellow council member, Hernández, about the citizens voting on the Mary Rhodes and turning it down, I couldn't resist because we also turned down the, uh, bayfront destination, but yet it got, you know, more or less built. And Mary Rhodes did get built. So, we find ways, um, you know, the people are, are mindful of their tax dollars, right? And since you guys, I mean, we don't know what the cost is. That's one issue. Uh, but, again, um, you know, you take for granted that the people are not wise. Well, they are wise. And when something is, is really good for the public, then it's pretty transparent because usually you have the people vote on it. And I appreciate you, uh, you know, Peter, on, on, um, getting our, um, desalination forums out into the public. But one thing that was missing was, you know, giving us an opportunity to vote up or down. That we don't have. So, that's what's missing.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Barrena.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, gentlemen, thank you so much. I, I appreciate you gentlemen, uh, bringing this to us, at least moving forth the effort. You know, I've often said that I think, um, our challenge was, uh, collaboration, as I've said before. And, you know, Sean, I, I just want to commend you. I can probably count a handful of people that are probably as passionate as you are with regard to ensuring that the, the, the citizens of the community have an uninterrupted water supply. And it's getting to the point as to where sometimes we've had differs, differ, spirited, uh, differences of opinion. And, you know, I, I really respect you for that. And, uh, what is it? Uh, I challenge others just to, to work as hard as you do on that. Um, I, I guess, uh, the, there, there's a couple of things with regard to, you know, statements that were made with the people. And one of the reasons I say that it's your passion is because of the customers you serve. Uh, I would say that about 20% of the, the individuals that we serve are employed by industry through the Port of Corpus Christi. So, 20% of the population of the half a mi, of the 500,000 people that we serve are employed by industry through the, 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 through the Port of Corpus Christi. You know, so I know you take that with great responsibility. Um, the other thing is, is that, um, you know, I, I, I had been, I had been, um, a, a little bit assertive with staff about, um, trying to put together a, I, I, we're, we're putting together some issues with regard to conservation. Uh, and, and a lot of times I've said, basically, we need to put together a collective campaign so that we're engaging the community and engaging our youth. Um, you know, the port has also done an excellent job of trying to reach out to the community. Um, I just looked at the website just right now. I was really impressed. Um, so, that, that's one of the things that I may challenge the, you two gentlemen, is to try and work together so that way we can have this campaign. I know Councilmember Campus has, is, is not confident with how industry is, um, uh, is not confident with how industry is conserving water. So, I, I would, I would encourage you, as one of the leaders, to basically, um, have them reach out to the community. And I, I, I don't see Bob Paulson in the, in the, around, but if that way, the public knows what good stewards that industry has been to ensure that, um, that water is reused. You know, there's a reclamation process. Um, you know, I, I'm surprised that you say that. What was the stat that you said that indicated that here in Texas, water is reused?
We're, we're a little higher. The national average is 1%. I think Texas is actually 13.
Yeah.
So, it's better than a lot of states. Uh, but Israel's 87.
Yeah.
So, there's a tremendous amount of opportunity for improvement there.
And that's another thing. Thank you for, for bringing, bringing that individual over here. I saw, I, once again, I saw it all on YouTube. I, I had been in Austin during the, the luncheon. It was really informative. Um, so, that, that's another thing that I'd ask the, the, the two of you to collaborate on, is that we've got to communicate to the public, because there's a, there's a broad amount of cynicism, a broad amount of cynicism, as you well know. And, uh, sometimes we're, we're guilty of, of being cynical amongst each other. So, uh, I think that's the one thing, that the public needs to know all the work that, uh, that private industry is doing. I think I talked to, um, you know, Go Close Gross Ventures. They said they, the, I think, uh, they reuse their water at least a minimum of twice, sometimes three times. And, uh, what have you. And then they have sa, some of the same conservation efforts that we do with regard to, you know, watering their landscaping. It's only once a week as well. So, I, I think we need to convey that so that way the public understands, um, um, that we're, we're all partners because we all have this problem. Now, how we're going to come to a solution, I think that's where we've been differing. So, once again, thank you for all that. If you could, it, it worked with your leadership to engage that, Peter, you as well. Um, I know I talked to staff also at, on Friday at length with Mike Murphy and his team about some expectations because, you know, uh, several of us during the last election were targeted because our support of industry. And it's not so much our support of industry, uh, it was also the, the, uh, the necessity for ensuring that we have another water source. And, uh, so, um, I think, once again, you know, my, my father used to say, the devil never sleeps. And sometimes you don't know what they're, what, how they're dressed, how the devil is dressed to be able to come to you. So, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there with regard to other organizations. Um, I saw a piece yesterday that said, that boldly said that a desalination facility was going to cost a billion dollars. I mean, we don't know what that number is. It may be coming up sometime soon, or, or, I mean, whatever the situation.
It, it may. It, it may. But I will tell you, the alternative is a lot more expensive.
I, I would agree with it. I would agree with it. So, um, so then, the other thing is that, uh, you know, uh, right now, Peter spoke to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, basically, it spoke to the fact that probably Evangeline would be one of the, probably the, the most available resources to be able to serve our, uh, our, our community. Um, once again, it wasn't necessarily on my radar screen. Obviously, I'm open-minded to exploring it. It also determines, you know, the same thing. I've always said, I've said that the Evangeline also has an environmental impact, and there's a cost associated with that. So, we need to be cognizant of that. Um, you know, uh, thank you for, you know, employing, uh, Pape Dawson. I know they're a reputable firm. Um, what is it? Um, the other thing, the other item is also uh, with regard to, um, uh, the inner harbor is another facility that we feel that would be able to provide at least some relief uh, along those lines in conjunction where you are. So, has, have your, have you and your commissioners had any conversations with regards, and since this is a, if we're going to come to a collaborative effort, and we're going to ensuring that we have water for our region and, and, and the customers of the port? Because once again, they employ 20% of the community. So, uh, have, have you had any discussions at this time as to where, how you can collaborate with us? A lot of your, your presentation was specifically on Harbor Island.
Uh, yes, we have. Peter and I have discussed, and in fact, uh, as you saw from the presentation, there's a tour scheduled of the inner harbor site for this Friday. I will be at that tour. I certainly am encouraging, uh, commissioners, uh, some of my bosses, to attend that tour as well. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, learning more about that, as well as the Evangeline. And the bottom line is, you know, we, we have to solve for this if we are going to continue to drive more investment to this region. And, you know, for your constituents, in talking to some of our customers who have an opportunity to place their capital in other sovereign nations, that some might think that they're, um, uh, less, uh, um, uh, they're, they're less regulated. Uh, I will tell you, you know, one of our customers has large operations in the European Union and in the United States. They say that the United States is much more heavily environmentally regulated than even the EU. And we should be. As far as I'm concerned, industry does need to be held accountable. That's why government is there. But you have to balance that between being, hold them accountable and not being so draconian that you drive that business out of our state or out of our nation, and it goes to some other nation that uses those dollars in more nefarious ways. We've already seen that. And that's why I think Texas has a golden opportunity to really grasp the prize, and this nation has an opportunity to grasp the prize when it comes to not only traditional energy, but the new energy transition initiatives that the port is certainly working on, all of which are going to be heavily dependent on more water. If we're going to have greener, cleaner fuels, water is going to be front and center pivotal for our ability to transition to some of those cleaner, greener fuels.
Excellent, excellent. And, um, um, okay, nothing further. I, I was, I, I got caught up in your, I, I'm trying to do more so to pay attention to somebody rather than thinking about my thoughts, and you threw me off. But, hey, I, I, if, if I remember, I'll come back. But, uh, once again, I, I want to thank the two of you gentlemen for, for, for putting your heads together so that way we can, we recognize that this is an issue that we need to solve collaboratively and that it's, it's, we're, we're, it's, it's one issue that, that it's a problem that we all have that needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Right. Councilman, can I just add to that?
Sure, sure, sure.
Sean has committed to me that he is willing to look at all sources to benefit the city and the region. So, it's not just Harbor Island for Sean. It's, uh, it's, again, it's all looking at everything. I've asked him point-blank if Harbor Island is too pricey, or if we can't afford it, or even if, if that's not even the equation. Just if we wanted to pursue inner harbor, would you be willing to support us? And his answer, he'll tell it to you right here. It was yes then, it still is, yes.
And, yeah, and we'll even go a step further. We will do everything in our power to bring you new customers. That, that's our, that's our job, is to bring new investment to the region while taking care of those that are already here and have already put their, their hard-earned dollars here. Uh, we want to make sure, that's how we keep our costs low. That's how we keep our prices low, by adding more customers into the portfolio. That's why we have some of the lowest tariffs in the entire nation.
That's, that's excellent. New customers is great. I, I remember what I was going to say. Basically, now, I guess the challenges that we're facing Mary Rhodes also, that, that's the other thing that I was going to emphasize, that we, we'd look with regard to that. And then I know you had indicated to me personally also that with regard to a lot of the, now, Peter had indicated that the, uh, offering, uh, some of the property- the, now, Peter had indicated that the offering, some of the property that the port owns with regard to expansion of our facility within the Inner Harbor, I think at one time Peter mentioned that there was somewhat of a checkerboard, but I know you had committed to me that, at that time, that if it was, if, if the property was available, then you would make it available to the city.
Well, I certainly would present it. I don't have, as much as people think that I have that kind of authority. I serve at the pleasure of a governing body, just as Peter does. I would be happy to present it to them, for sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. So I'm a little bit disappointed in this presentation being 100% on the focus of Harbor Island. As it states here, "How the Port of Corpus Christi can assist the city of Corpus Christi in pursuit of desalination and other water resources." So I'm hearing it, but Peter, I guess I'd like to know, in your discussions and numerous, I think you said, conversations, text messages, or what have you, where's the rest of this? So how else is, how else are we going to collaborate? And let me say, I am very, as all of our, I think, dais here is, happy that we are coming together to discuss, right, the one common issue, which is water. And we all know that. But please, help me understand, where's the rest of the presentation?
There is more presentations coming, Mayor, so?
No, 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 the one here with the port, which was to discuss, you know, all of it, not just one.
Right, yeah. Today's presentation is based on less, it's actually less than 30 days because of business, travel, and other, so this, what we're showing you today is what, in less than 30 days, we have been able to develop. That includes, one, having us better understanding the Harbor Island site, two, already beginning to better understand from the port site, our site. That's why this Friday will be our first tour, and Sean is committed to going.
Was that the one you mentioned?
Yes. I mentioned it, yeah, that's the one I mentioned.
I know, but a minute ago, he mentioned one.
He mentioned it too, right. So we're going to do three tours of the Inner Harbor Ship Channel site. That includes this Friday, next Friday, and the following Friday for the council members. Sean's going this Friday, and several of his commissioners are going to attend as well. So it's all work in progress. We can expect, that's why Councilman Hernandez, when he made some motions back in, about a month ago, hoping to get some type of a, a very finite definitive piece of work today in less than 30 days. It takes time, right, it takes time. So in this less than 30 days, by choice, I decide, I made a choice, because I'd actually scheduled the tour of Harbor Island even before council took that resolution vote, because I, it finally dawned on me, let me, let me learn more about Harbor Island, I really know very little about it. So since that was scheduled already prior to the council's vote, we continue to better understand Harbor Island. Sean has committed to me again, that he, as much time as we've spent, which is very little in the last couple of weeks, equally will be spent on the city's Inner Harbor site, the Evangeline site, as well as the Barney Davis site. So all that is coming, and we mentioned it earlier, this is one of what will be numerous presentations on collaboration. But what I also mentioned is, we, nobody has any facts that we can, that you, that we can present to the council to say, "Vote on this, because this is the distribution system, and this is the price, and this is the impact to the environment," or what have you. We don't have that yet, nobody does. Sean doesn't have it, the city doesn't have it.
Right.
And so that's what we're working on. So progress has been made to better understand one of numerous options, that being Harbor Island, by the vote that the commissioners took today to engage in Pape Dawson at the port's expense of up to $250,000, to see how does that site connect with the city's distribution system. We have a general understanding of how it would connect in our Inner Harbor site location, and we're moving forward with things like the AEP power study, we got some good news from it, so, but still not enough information to have any definitive rate model pricing on any one of the five locations, to include Evangeline. So Mayor, the short answer is, is that's coming. And the presentation was 50/50. Sean, and we talked about it, spoke more, just to continue, or to kind of, I guess, add more to the tours that several council members took, and several will take tomorrow, since he was there. He said, "Let me talk a little bit more then about Harbor Island." And the next presentation, probably from him, won't be about Harbor Island, since he's presenting it today. And we're not sure yet what'll be on, but...
And I think, look, I think that, as was the leadership that was demonstrated by this body and the commission, encouraging Peter and I to work together. Now, Peter and I have teams, our respective teams, that we need to also get together. Some of them have already met, and it's about really getting that momentum going. These are not issues that you can resolve in days or even weeks. These are going to take months, possibly even years, given the complexity of them, the scale of them. And, you know, some of this is beyond our control. That was the whole purpose why we wanted to pursue permitting in the first place. So once we obtain all the permits, it's not in anybody's control but the local community, the local governments, that have the ability to set the cadence for the direction and which way we're going to go. As long as permitting is in the hands of a state or a federal agency, it's not within the control of anybody in this room. And I think that's always been my goal, is to permit, get as much of the permitting and the permitting bureaucracy out of the way, so we can bring the decision-making to this chamber, and certainly to the commission chamber. And that's what I'm committed to doing with my staff, and I know Peter is committed to that as well. And by the way, y'all have a city to run, we have a port to run. So, you know, this is one of many things that's very important to us, but we, I share in the commitment, the resolve of Peter, that we're going to move this as swiftly as we can, and just want to manage all those expectations that it's, as much as I wish we could snap our finger and we'd have all that done and the answers for you, unfortunately, it just doesn't work like that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I would just reemphasize that it is moving forward, and I know it was a strict or stringent, quick deadline that we focus across the board. And that's not necess, well, we'll go into that later. All right, so let's see, Councilman Roy.
Much of what I wanted to say has already been covered, so, but there are a couple things that I'd like to talk about, and I want to stress the fact that in terms of looking at the alternative water sources, I want to make sure that we kind of do that, we multitask, so that we give equal attention to Evangeline, and look at that possibility at the same time as we continue to work forward with the port. I don't want us to put that on the back burner and say, "Okay, now we found out the dollar amount, and now we're going to look into Evangeline." Because I think in meeting with them, they said they could possibly have a resolution within 18 to 24 months. I think that's important, to be able to figure that out. But the other thing I wanted to talk about, and I think, because I think it's important because week after week, we hear people come forward, and they talk about desalination, and what they feel that it's going to do, and I attended the briefing from the gentleman from, from Israel, and he actually showed a map of all of the potential, or the existing facilities. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they had some that were in Inner Harbor, right? In the, in their, no?
No, so they're, all their facilities, they have six that are built, and they have another two under construction. They're producing right now a little over 700 million gallons a day, and they have a population of 9 million Israelis and 6 million Palestinians, so about half the population of Texas.
The reason why I'm asking that, he showed a slide that had the Mediterranean Sea, right?
Right.
And he had them discharging onto the beach, right? Do you remember that?
Yes, and, and that particular facility was mixing with the cooling water from the power plant. And so when you mix with the cooling water from the power plant, then you have an opportunity to actually not have to introduce it in the, with a diffuser, a jet diffuser, because you basically have, have already diluted it. You know, the term, the solution to pollution is dilution. It's the same with, with water. If you're mixing fresh water, fresh coolant water with hypersaline effluent, you can get it to a level where it can be introduced with no impact. What's happening, though, is that particular plant is closing down. That's a coal-fired power plant, and they're switching to natural gas. So they're, they're closing that, that portion of the plant down that has that cooling water, and so they're in the process right now of boring offshore to be able to then use a jet diffuser and reintroduce that, much as they're doing with the other facilities across the country.
But I want to make sure, one of the things I heard him also say is, how many facilities has he worked on in his lifetime? It was, it was well into 60-plus or something.
Oh, in terms of water facilities? Oh, yeah, he's spent his whole career in the water business.
Because one of the questions that was also asked was, is it safe? You know, and I think he did give us an answer in terms of that. I think he actually said that the fish actually seem to enjoy...
They do. So we've seen that in some of the locations. In fact, in Sydney, there was a tremendous consternation because of the proximity to the Great Barrier Reef and to the diversity of the aquatic life there. And so a lot of consternation from the marine biology and coastal ecology constituency, the scientific community. They have seen now a 300% increase in their fish stocks around that discharge. Some of that may be based on temperature, but believe it or not, the brine can have a positive impact for certain species. We just don't know at this point, because we haven't done it yet, so we're taking a very conservative approach.
I guess at the end of the day, I just want to assure the public that, number one, this council, you know, the mayor, the city staff, there's nothing that we want to do to harm the environment. That's the last thing that we want to do is harm the environment.
Agreed.
And when you take a look at everything that we go through, and that we will go through before we're able to get a permit, you know, all of those agencies are there to protect the environment. And so if you, you know, if you've had the ability to have a desal plant in California, which California is known to have pretty stringent environmental controls, right? And they've been able to put that and operate out there for years without any issues. I just want to remind people that, because I think a lot of times, we're hearing this doom and gloom and certain things, and we don't, there's no backing in terms of, of the things that are being said. And so I just, again, I am sure that this council doesn't want to do anything to harm the environment, to make it worse than how we found it.
And neither does the Port Authority Commission or staff, and we have a very robust environmental policy that essentially says that we will not undertake any development or any operation unless water quality, air quality, soils and sediments quality, climate adaptation, climate action, environmental sustainability, unless all of those things are taken into consideration. We were the first port in the nation, in the, in the world, actually, to go 100% renewable on our power. That's because we have an abundance of renewable energy in the state of Texas and made it available for us to do that. That cost us more money, but we did that because it's the right thing to do. We are fully embracing the Energy Transition Initiative. Why? Because it's the right thing to do. When you look at our customers and how they are engaged in air quality and water quality protections, everybody, from Valero to Sitco to Cheniere, to everybody, everybody is committed to those same things. I know, when you see a flare, you think that that is actually bad for the community, and there are probably certain aspects of it that have a negative environmental impact. But I assure you, as somebody who's traveled to over 40 countries and has seen oil and gas produced in other places, this is the safest, cleanest, greenest venue in the entire world to produce energy and to move energy. Do we have room for improvement? Absolutely. Are we committed to doing that? Absolutely.
And yet, again, people make the assumption, when people come up and they have, we have public comment, that automatically the things that they're addressing, number one, it's supposed to be factual. I just want the community at large to understand that a lot of times, it may or may not be factual. So it's always good for all of us to do our own homework, and try to come to those conclusions ourself, or ask an expert. So, thank you.
Councilman Pasley.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief, because it's past 1:30. And I get hungry when it gets past 1:30.
Hungry or hungry?
Yeah. I just, like Councilman Roy said, most, everything I want to say has already been said, but I want to thank both of you personally for this effort and moving this forward. I think when it comes to the comments about informing the public, this is how we do it. This is how we do it. You know, the fact that we're working together, you're going to have these presentations in an open council meeting, that's videoed, that's available on social media, that, you know, that we're not hiding anything up here. And the people who come up here and accuse us of that just don't know what they're talking about. So that's, that's very encouraging, and I really appreciate y'all's efforts and hard work. We have a long way to go, as you pointed out, but I remember I was having a discussion several years ago with a past city manager here in Corpus, and I brought up the subject of desal to him, and he said, "Well, that's just too expensive." And I said, "Well, in terms of compared to what? Running out?" So we need to all be conscious of that. We have a number of challenges now at the city that the public probably doesn't know about, and one of which is the Mary Rose Pipeline that we've all talked about. We're only using 50% of that pipeline because of its age and the problems we have when we try to run it above 50%. So there are a number of issues we're going to have to address as we go down the road. And if we didn't have that pipeline, we'd be in serious trouble. We'd be in serious trouble for water. So thank you all very much, I appreciate what you're doing, and we'll keep it going. Thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Again, what Councilman Pasley just said, and what Councilman Roy said, but a lot of great, great information. Appreciate you guys both being here and presenting all the information, all the work you're doing to work together. But, and again, it's important that we work on all the different initiatives in parallel, and I know you're doing that. Peter just reassured us he's doing that, and just a lot to be done. But, you know, timing is of the essence, appreciate everybody's effort. Thank you.
We are, if I can just add to that, and to Councilman Roy's too, if we look at last week, Councilman Roy, the team, myself, Sean, and Mike Murphy and his team, we worked on four, four water sources simultaneously and all about equal time. So that includes better understanding Harbor Island, looking at the Inner Harbor and our permit processes and AEP's work, looking at Barney Davis, we have a consultant studying that location, and then spending time on Evangeline, so that's a lot of work. It's just, to some extent, almost too, you know, when you start spreading yourself too thin, it can be dangerous as well. But we haven't fixated on one over any other. We're working on four, and actually more than that, almost equal timing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Strabberidge, thank you for being here, sir.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you again. I'm grateful for the opportunity, and look forward to addressing this body again in the future. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Okay, so let's see, I think we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and break for lunch, unless we have...
Mayor, can I make a motion that we move to approve item number 11 for the grant?
So item number 11 is an ordinance...
The ADG grant?
Yeah, we can, I think we can do that. Let me read that, so the public knows it's an ordinance accepting the $1.6 million grant from the Office of the Governor, from the Texas Military Preparedness Commission for the Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant, or DEAG, to provide funding for wastewater collection system line and manhole replacement in support of naval air station Corpus Christi. So this is a big item, it's a big good news item, because we are helping, we're working collaboration with the, our military installation. Would you like to say anything?
I was just saying what staff member, Wendy, was supposed to be reporting in via WebEx, but I'm not sure if we've...
Right. Well, we are moving it up, and it is a grant, and it's a big deal, and we appreciate, obviously, always trying to help in protection of our naval installation. So we do have a motion, but with that, I'm going to ask for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to provide any public comment on item number 11? Okay, there being no one, I'll close public comment. And do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. So we're going to go ahead and break for lunch. The council will also go into executive session. Ms. Huerta, we are pulling, and Peter, we're pulling item number 13, which is the executive session item for the city auditor, and we'll be back with, for that in a future date.
I'm sorry, can you clarify, are you gonna, are you, we're going to do executive session for number 12 or 13?
Right, I'm about to, yeah, 12. That's what I'm saying, we're pulling, no, not 12. We're going into executive session for item number 13. Item 12 has been pulled for a future date.
We won't do number 12.
Yes, so that's per Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. So we will return. Thank you.
Life is made easy with 3-1-1, a fast and reliable way to report a problem or get information on city services, everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call 3-1-1 or download the MyCC 3-1-1 app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information... upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. 3-1-1 provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with 3-1-1. Download MyCC311 app today.
The Junior Olympics is happening April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. So last year, when we pulled it off in 2022, it was an amazing opportunity to bring it back to Corpus Christi after being gone for 30 years.
Nowadays, to bring Junior Olympics back into Corpus, it's awesome because you don't know, you might be looking at a future world champion.
And now they get to go in there, get that experience to be able to perform in front of thousands of people and then have that memory and that experience for the rest of their lives to talk about.
You're gonna be seeing kids from eight all the way to the age of 16, and for them going, leaving it all in the ring and duking it out. You're preparing for the best and of course, you want to meet the best and you're gonna meet the best in there. It's gotta be conditioning from the basics all the way, learning your combos.
The excitement that the crowd gives, takes a lot of courage to be able to step in the ring and do that, knowing you're gonna battle against somebody and it's gonna be one winner and it's all on you, giving it 100%.
And to show that courage and that they can, they have that will, it can be done, it's a whole different, I mean, that's what you want to experience. And they'll learn something and meaningful and there's something going to take with them for the rest of their life.
This year, we're looking to break records. We want over 500 registered boxers to attend, and we're expecting over 5,000 to 6,000 people in attendance for the three days. So it's a big impact for the city and we love that because of the fact that it's a part of our community that we're here. I would like for you to come out, show your support to all these amateur boxers that have been training hard, get some ringside action. Again, you never know who the next professional boxer that's gonna be performing here today that you'll see later in life.
The city of Corpus Christi has been working hard for the future. To ensure we have a confident supply of clean water, we've secured four water sources for our community. But it's up to you to maintain our water supply through effective and efficient use, limiting your outdoor watering, installing modernized plumbing, and making smart landscaping choices. Together, we can keep our water resources secure for our growing city.
Did you know you can submit a request for city services in just a few minutes using your phone? Download the free MyCC311 app to get started. Quickly report issues such as street maintenance, water or gas issues, garbage pickup, code violations, or animal care services. The MyCC311 app is easy to use. Upload information and photos, identify the location, hit submit, and you're all done. Life made easy with 3-1-1. Download the MyCC311 app today.
We've all dealt with the hassles of traveling. Traffic, long lines, security, layoffs. And what if there was a smarter way? When you fly out of Corpus Christi International Airport, you get all the modern amenities you love with the stress-free convenience of flying locals. So you can skip the hassle and get right to the good parts, taking off and returning home. Fly smarter, not harder, at flyccia.com.
When emergencies strike, stay informed with Reverse Alert. Everything from incoming severe weather, traffic alerts, police and fire activity, industry alerts, and citywide information. Reverse Alert will provide you time-sensitive information to keep you safe. Signing up is a fast and easy process. Text BREADYCCNC to 888-777, or visit ccTexas.com/alert signup. Choose to receive notifications by phone call, text, or email. And with fully customizable options, you pick what notifications you want to receive. And you can designate what hours of the day that you don't want to be disturbed. Stay informed, stay aware, stay alert. Sign up for Reverse Alert today.
Beach to Bay is back. Join us Saturday, May 20th for the 46th Annual Beach to Bay Relay Marathon. Participate with over 8,000 runners in a 26.2-mile six-leg event. Runners start in the sands of North Padre Island, cross the JFK Causeway, travel through Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, and finish along our scenic Shoreline Boulevard. For the first time, you can choose from three separate events to participate. Run as a team in the six-person relay, split up the run with your partner in the two-person relay, or challenge yourself and run the entire 26.2-mile marathon solo. Register online at beachtobayrelay.com. Beach to Bay starts at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 20th. Come be a part of Corpus Christi's biggest relay marathon tradition. Join family, friends, and the community at Beach to Bay 2023.
You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC311 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 3-1-1 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 3-1-1. Download the MyCC311 app today.
My name is Drew Molly. I'm the Director of Water Systems and Support Services for Corpus Christi Water. I'm standing here at Choke Canyon. It's one of four drinking water sources. It's one of the most important water reservoirs for our city of Corpus Christi. If you look behind me, you'll see these buoys that are laying on the ground. These buoys are typically floating on the water surface, which indicates that the reservoir is significantly lower than where it normally is. As you may be aware, the city of Corpus Christi is in stage one water restrictions, and so we're asking everybody to do their part to conserve water. We urge you to save water and we appreciate your efforts.
Your safety is important at Corpus Christi beaches. A beach warning flag system is in place to let you know what weather conditions you can expect before getting into the water. There are five different beach warning flags. The main three are green, yellow, and red. Green means go. The water is calm and it is safe to swim. Just swim with care. Yellow means caution. The waves are getting bigger and there may be a small rip current. We recommend adult or lifeguard supervision while swimming. Red means stop. Danger is ahead. The surf is dangerous with strong winds, big waves, and strong rip currents. Do not enter the ocean in red flag conditions unless you are a very strong swimmer. And do not let your kids swim at all. The last two flags are purple and orange. Purple indicates the presence of harmful sea animals, jellyfish, sharks, or other venomous marine life have been spotted close to shore. And orange means there is an environmental hazard in the air or water quality. The conditions are not safe for your health. Make sure to check the weather and water conditions when heading out to the beach. Follow us on Facebook at Corpus Christi Beaches, or visit ccTexas.com/ beaches for daily warning flag updates and surf conditions.
Many households in our community rely on natural gas. It's important to know how to detect a gas leak and how to report it. You can detect gas leaks through sight, smell, and sound. If you see dead vegetation near a pipeline, smell rotting eggs, or hear a hissing noise, there could be a leak nearby. Make sure to leave the area immediately. If you suspect a gas leak, call the gas department at 3-1-1. Do not light a match and avoid using any electrical switches so you don't create a spark that could start a fire. Also, avoid driving into the area. Your vehicle's engine may ignite the vapors. And do not attempt to extinguish any fire that might start. Natural gas is a part of the city of Corpus Christi's utility system, and keeping our residents safe is our top priority. For more information, visit ccTexas.com/gas.
The city of Corpus Christi reminds you, there are small, everyday ideas you can use to protect us from drought-related water shortages. Inside your home, install modernized plumbing, low-flow showerheads, and simply turn off the faucet when not in use. Outside your home, make smart landscaping choices, limit your watering, and don't water during the hottest part of the day. Simple choices that will save water for the community and save money on your utility bill. We can all drink to that.
The cost of repairing or replacing leaky or old gas lines could be too much for some residents of Corpus Christi. The city of Corpus Christi, in partnership with Nextera, is here to help you. The Plumbers to People program is dedicated to the safety and well-being of Corpus Christi residents by helping with repairs for their homes. We have partnered with multiple plumbers in the community to repair and replace old leaking gas lines free of charge to the consumer. The purpose of the program is to bring peace of mind to the community and offer support to those in need. To learn more, contact 826-CITY. The Plumbers to People program is here to help you.
Your public libraries are now accessible at your fingertips. From our free digital resources options, tap into discovery and read, listen, watch digital content all from the comfort of your home. Anytime and anywhere you go, you can now borrow eBooks, audiobooks, movies, music, magazines, and watch educational programs. Our digital resources offers thousands of titles to choose from, all from your computer, tablet, or phone. And did we mention, it's all free? Visit ccTexas.com/library for more information on how to sign up.
Corpus Christi Water is here to demonstrate how to look at your water meter to spot potential water loss from leaky pipes. First, turn off all water fixtures, including faucets, hoses, ice makers, and irrigation systems. Next, locate your water meter. Corpus Christi water meters will always be in the utility easement, which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. Remove the meter box lid. On the top of the meter, there is a register with numbers. These numbers show how much water is being used. Each meter will also have a flow indicator with a red line or possibly a small red triangle. A flow indicator that is not moving indicates that no water is going through your meter and you do not have a leak. If the flow indicator is moving, water is flowing through your system even though you turned off all fixtures. This means you may have a leak. Look for a leak in or around your home and repair it as soon as possible, or contact a certified plumber for help. If you have any issues with your water or wastewater, please dial 3-1-1.
Whether you're a homeowner planting a tree or contractor working on a job site, always call 811 at least two days before you dig. It's free, it's easy, and it's the law. Call 811 to provide dig location and project information. A specialist will then come to your location and mark the underground line, allowing you to work safely without any delay. Your safety is our priority. Know what's below and call 811 before you dig.
Before you head out to the beach, make sure you grab your beach permit. For only $12, this permit provides access to explore and enjoy miles of our local beaches. Permits are required, so be sure to display the sticker on your vehicle. All the funds from the permit sales will be used to provide clean and safe beaches for all our visitors to enjoy. The permit is good until December 31st, so come back and visit us as often as you like.
A major issue at recycling facilities today is when plastic shopping bags are incorrectly added to the recycling bin. Plastic bags are accepted at many retail or grocery store recycling drop-off bins, but these items are not accepted in your local recycling program. When recycling plastic bags and overwrap at these retail drop-off locations, it is important to remove any receipts or stickers from the plastic and make sure it is clean and dry. The types of soft plastic accepted at these drop-off locations include thin plastic shopping bags, zip-top storage bags, bubble wrap, plastic mailers, and plastic overwrap packaging. The key to becoming a better recycler is to sort your waste correctly so you can recycle more. This helps reduce your waste in landfills and has a positive impact on the environment. Thank you for recycling.
The city of Corpus Christi is proud to introduce a new 3-1-1 call center. What is 3-1-1? It's an easy-to-remember citizen's hotline to report non-emergencies or ask questions about city services. You can report problems and create service requests, check the status of issues, and obtain general information without tying up emergency lines. All you need to do is dial 3-1-1 and you will be connected with a trained customer service agent who can help you with all types of issues like reporting potholes in your neighborhood, illegal dumping, graffiti, animal cruelty, and much more. Have a question about your utility bill or need to find out if it's your day for garbage or recycling collection? That's right, 3-1-1 will give you that information and much more. There's also a free 3-1-1 mobile app available in the App Store and Google Play Store. App users can snap pictures and upload them with complaints and requests, and even track the progress from start to finish. Another way to access 3-1-1 is by going to 311.cctexas.com. This option allows you to send in your requests online and has a live chat feature where you can chat instantly with the call center representative to help you with any questions you need answered. The 3-1-1 call center is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The 3-1-1 service is part of an ongoing effort by the city of Corpus Christi to make city government easier and more responsive to the needs of residents, business owners, and visitors. Corpus Christi 3-1-1, where solutions start with a call. Corpus Christi 311, where solutions start with a call.
Life is made easy with 311, a fast and reliable way to report a problem or get information on city services. Everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call 311 or download the MyCC311 app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. 311 provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with 311. Download MyCC311 app today.
The Junior Olympics is happening April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. So last year, when we pulled it off in 2022, it was an amazing opportunity to bring it back to Corpus Christi after being gone for 30 years.
Nowadays, to bring Junior Olympics back into Corpus, it's awesome because you don't know, you might be looking at a future world champion.
And now they get to go in there, get that experience, to be able to perform in front of thousands of people, and then have that memory and that experience for the rest of their life to talk about.
You're gonna be seeing kids from eight all the way to the age of 16, and for them going, leaving it all in the ring and duking it out. You're preparing for the best, and of course, you want to meet the best, and you're gonna meet the best in there. It's gotta be conditioning, from the basics all the way learning your combos.
The excitement that the crowd gives, takes a lot of courage to be able to step in the ring and do that, knowing you're gonna battle against somebody, and it's gonna be one winner, and it's all on you, giving it 100%.
And to show that courage and that they can, they have that will, that it can be done, it's a whole different, I mean, that's what you want to experience. And they'll learn something meaningful, and that's something they're gonna take with them for the rest of their life.
This year, we're looking to break records. We want over 500 registered boxers to attend, and we're expecting over 5,000 to 6,000 people in attendance for the three days. So it's a big impact for the city, and we love that because of the fact that it's a part of our community that we're here. I would like for you to come out, show your support to all these amateur boxers that have been training hard, get some ringside action. Again, you never know who the next professional boxer that's gonna be performing here today that you'll see later in life.
The city of Corpus Christi has been working hard for the future. To ensure we have a confident supply of clean water, we've secured four water sources for our community. But it's up to you to maintain our water supply through effective and efficient use, limiting your outdoor watering, installing modernized plumbing, and making smart landscaping choices. Together, we can keep our water resources secure for our growing city. Did you know you can submit a request for city services in just a few minutes using your phone? Download the free MyCC311 app to get started. Quickly report issues such as street maintenance, water or gas issues, garbage pickup, code violations, or animal care services. The MyCC311 app is easy to use. Upload information and photos, identify the location, hit submit, and you're all done. Life made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today.
We've all dealt with the hassles of traveling. Traffic, turnovers. What if there was a smarter way? When you fly out of Corpus Christi International Airport, you get all the modern amenities you love with the stress-free convenience of flying global. So you can skip the hassle and get right to the good parts, taking off and returning home. Fly smarter, not harder, at flyccia.com.
When emergencies strike, stay informed with Reverse Alert. Everything from incoming severe weather, traffic alerts, police and fire activity, industry alerts, and citywide information. Reverse Alert will provide you time-sensitive information to keep you safe. Signing up is a fast and easy process. Text BREADYCCNC to 888-777, or visit ccTexas.com/AlertSignUp. Choose to receive notifications by phone call, text, or email. And with fully customizable options, you pick what notifications you want to receive. And you can designate what hours of the day that you don't want to be disturbed. Stay informed, stay aware, stay alert. Sign up for Reverse Alert today.
Beach to Bay is back. Join us Saturday, May 20th for the 46th Annual Beach to Bay Relay Marathon. Participate with over 8,000 runners in a 26.2-mile, six-leg event. Runners start in the sands of North Padre Island, cross the JFK Causeway, travel through Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, and finish along our scenic shoreline boulevard. For the first time, you can choose from three separate events to participate. Run as a team in the six-person relay, split up the run with your partner in the two-person relay, or challenge yourself and run the entire 26.2-mile marathon solo. Register online at beachtobayrelay.com. Beach to Bay starts at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 20th. Come be a part of Corpus Christi's biggest relay marathon tradition. Join family, friends, and the community at Beach to Bay 2023.
You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC311 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 311 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today.
My name is Drew Molly. I'm the Director of Water Systems and Support Services for Corpus Christi Water. I'm standing here at Choke Canyon. It's one of four drinking water sources. It's one of the most important water reservoirs for our city of Corpus Christi. If you look behind me, you'll see these buoys that are laying on the ground. These buoys are typically floating on the water surface, which indicates that the reservoir is significantly lower than where it normally is. As you may be aware, the city of Corpus Christi is in stage one water restrictions, and so we're asking everybody to do their part to conserve water.
My name is Drew Molly. I'm the Director of Water Systems and Support Services for Corpus Christi Water. I'm standing here at Choke Canyon. It's one of four drinking water sources. It's one of the most important water reservoirs for our city of Corpus Christi. If you look behind me, you'll see these buoys that are laying on the ground. These buoys are typically floating on the water surface, which indicates that the reservoir is significantly lower than where it normally is. As you may be aware, the city of Corpus Christi is in stage one water restrictions. And so we're asking everybody to do their part to conserve water. We urge you to save water, and we appreciate your efforts.
The Junior Olympics is happening April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. So last year when we pulled it off in 2022, it was an amazing opportunity to bring it back to Corpus Christi after being gone for 30 years.
Nowadays, to bring Junior Olympics back into Corpus, it's awesome because you don't know, you might be looking at the future world champions.
And now they get to go in there, get that experience to be able to perform in front of thousands of people, and then have that memory and that experience for the rest of their life to talk about.
You're going to be seeing kids from age all the way to age of 16, and for them going, leaving it all in the ring and duking it out. You're preparing for the best, and of course, you want to meet the best, and you're going to meet the best in there. It's got to be conditioning from the basics all the way, learning your combos.
The excitement that the crowd gives, takes a lot of courage to be able to step in the ring and do that, knowing you're going to battle against somebody, and it's going to be one winner, and it's all on you, giving it 100%.
And to show that courage and that they can, they have that will, it can be done, it's a whole different, I mean, that's what you want to experience. And they'll learn something meaningful, and there's something going to fake with them for the rest of their life.
This year, we're looking to break records. We want over 500 registered boxers to attend, and we're expecting over 5,000 to 6,000 people in attendance for the three days. So it's a big impact for the city, and we love that because of the fact that it's a part of our community that we're here. I would like for you to come out, show your support to all these amateur boxers that have been training hard, get some ringside action. Again, you never know who the next professional boxer that's going to be performing here today that you'll see later in life.
The city of Corpus Christi has been working hard for the future. To ensure we have a confident supply of clean water, we've secured four water sources for our community. But it's up to you to maintain our water supply through effective and efficient use. Limiting your outdoor watering, installing modernized plumbing, and making smart landscaping choices. Together, we can keep our water resources secure for our growing city. Did you know you can submit a request for city services in just a few minutes using your phone? Download the free MyCC311 app to get started. Quickly report issues such as street maintenance, water or gas issues, garbage pickup, code violations, or animal care services. The MyCC311 app is easy to use. Upload information and photos, identify the location, hit submit, and you're all done. Life made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today.
We've all dealt with the hassles of traveling. Traffic, long lines, security, layovers. And what if there was a smarter way? When you fly at a Corpus Christi International Airport, you get all the modern amenities you love with the stress-free convenience of flying locals. So you can skip the hassle and get right to the good parts, taking off and returning home. Fly smarter, not harder, at flyccia.com.
When emergencies strike, stay informed with Revers Alert. Everything from incoming severe weather, traffic alerts, police and fire activity, industry alerts, and citywide information. Revers Alert will provide you time-sensitive information to keep you safe. Signing up is a fast and easy process. Text BREADYCCNC to 888-777, or visit ccTexas.com/alertsignup. Choose to receive notifications by phone call, text, or email. And with fully customizable options, you pick what notifications you want to receive. And you can designate what hours of the day that you don't want to be disturbed. Stay informed, stay aware, stay alert. Sign up for Revers Alert today.
Beach to Bay is back. Join us Saturday, May 20th, for the 46th Annual Beach to Bay Relay Marathon. Participate with over 8,000 runners in a 26.2-mile six-leg event. Runners start in the sands of North Padre Island, cross the JFK Causeway, travel through Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, and finish along our scenic Shoreline Boulevard. For the first time, you can choose from three separate events to participate. Run as a team in the six-person relay, split up the run with your partner in the two-person relay, or challenge yourself and run the entire 26.2-mile marathon solo. Register online at beachtobayrelay.com. Beach to Bay starts at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 20th. Come be a part of Corpus Christi's biggest relay marathon tradition. Join family, friends, and the community at Beach to Bay 2023.
You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC311 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 311 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today.
My name is Drew Molly. I'm the Director of Water Systems and Support Services for Corpus Christi Water. I'm standing here at Choke Canyon. It's one of four drinking water sources. It's one of the most important water reservoirs for our city of Corpus Christi. If you look behind me, you'll see these buoys that are laying on the ground. These buoys are typically floating on the water surface, which indicates that the reservoir is significantly lower than where it normally is. As you may be aware, the city of Corpus Christi is in stage one water restrictions. And so we're asking everybody to do their part to conserve water. We urge you to save water, and we appreciate your efforts.
Your safety is important at Corpus Christi Beaches. A beach warning flag system is in place to let you know what weather conditions you can expect before getting into the water. There are five different beach warning flags. The main three are green, yellow, and red. Green means go. The water is calm and it is safe to swim. Just swim with care. Yellow means caution. The waves are getting bigger and there may be a small rip current. We recommend adult or lifeguard supervision while swimming. Red means stop. Danger is ahead. The surf is dangerous with strong winds, big waves, and strong rip currents. Do not enter the ocean in red flag conditions unless you are a very strong swimmer. And do not let your kids swim at all. The last two flags are purple and orange. Purple indicates the presence of harmful sea animals, jellyfish, sharks, or other venomous marine life have been spotted close to shore. And orange means there is an environmental hazard in the air or water quality. The conditions are not safe for your health. Make sure to check the weather and water conditions when heading out to the beach. Follow us on Facebook at Corpus Christi Beaches, or visit ccTexas.com/Beaches for daily warning flag updates and surf conditions.
Many households in our community rely on natural gas. It's important to know how to detect a gas leak and how to report it. You can detect gas leaks through sight, smell, and sound. If you see dead vegetation near a pipeline, smell rotting eggs, or hear a hissing noise, there could be a leak nearby. Make sure to leave the area immediately. If you suspect a gas leak, call the gas department at 311. Do not light a match, and avoid using any electrical switches so you don't create a spark that could start a fire. Also, avoid driving into the area. Your vehicle's engine may ignite the vapors. And do not attempt to extinguish any fire that might start. Natural gas is a part of the city of Corpus Christi's utility system, and keeping our residents safe is our top priority. For more information, visit ccTexas.com/gas.
The city of Corpus Christi reminds you, there are small, everyday ideas you can use to protect us from drought-related water shortages. Inside your home, install modernized plumbing, low-flow showerheads, and simply turn off the faucet when not in use. Outside your home, make smart landscaping choices. Limit your watering, and don't water during the hottest part of the day. Simple choices that will save water for the community and save money on your utility bill. We can all drink to that.
The cost of repairing or replacing leaky or old gas lines could be too much for some residents of Corpus Christi. The city of Corpus Christi, in partnership with NextTerra, is here to help you. The Plumbers to People program is dedicated to the safety and well-being of Corpus Christi residents by helping with repairs for their homes. We have partnered with multiple plumbers in the community to repair and replace old leaking gas lines free of charge to the consumer. The purpose of the program is to bring peace of mind to the community and offer support to those in need. To learn more, contact 826-CITY. The Plumbers to People program is here to help you.
Your public libraries are now accessible at your fingertips. From our free digital resources options, tap into discovery and read, listen, watch digital content all from the comfort of your home. Anytime and anywhere you go, you can now borrow eBooks, audiobooks, movies, music, magazines, and watch educational programs. Our digital resources offers thousands of titles to choose from, all from your computer, tablet, or phone. And did we mention, it's all free? Visit ccTexas.com/library for more information on how to sign up.
Corpus Christi Water is here to demonstrate how to look at your water meter to spot potential water loss from leaky pipes. First, turn off all water fixtures, including faucets, hoses, ice makers, and irrigation systems. Next, locate your water meter. Corpus Christi water meters will always be in the utility easement, which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. which may be in the front of your home or in your backyard. Remove the meter box lid. On the top of the meter, there is a register with numbers. These numbers show how much water is being used. Each meter will also have a flow indicator with a red line or possibly a small red triangle. A flow indicator that is not moving indicates that no water is going through your meter, and you do not have a leak. If the flow indicator is moving, water is flowing through your system even though you turned off all fixtures. This means you may have a leak. Look for a leak in or around your home and repair it as soon as possible, or contact a certified plumber for help.
We're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Who was that? Was that you? Oh. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene our meeting. And, um, let's see. We are in Section L, which is our legislative update. Do we have Wendy Herman online, or?
Uh, we may wanna, let me try to get her set up, yeah.
We can come back to her.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to Section N, Individual Consideration Items, 9 through 11. And we've already passed item number 11, so we'll go ahead and do item number 9 and 10. Item number 9 is a motion authorizing a professional services contract with Lockwood Andrews &amp; Newman, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $720,760 to, or for Phase 1 of a linear park canal and drainage improvements from the North Beach Eco Park to Surfside Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers Jeff Edmonds, Director of Engineering Services. This item is to design and produce bid documents for the work that was described in the briefing that you had last October on a different solution than had been discussed for several years involving a navigable canal. This is looking at something that's gonna be a little bit more right-sized to the drainage problem, and will also incorporate landscape features. And we're hoping to create something that will serve a dual purpose there, to create amenity and something that'll be used by tourists as well as the citizens that live over there, and also help mitigate some of the nuisance flooding issues that we experience on North Beach. I stand ready for any questions.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Or did you want to?
Okay.
I'll rescind my motion.
Yeah, it's your district. Move to approve.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a second?
Second, or we're all seconded. I'll third.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make sure that this is being designed with bridges, not culverts, right?
There will be, there will be a few culverts, I believe, over one of the roadway areas. There's maybe some bridges.
Yeah, it's converting to culverts. It's gonna discharge out into the wetland area on the north.
Okay. But, I mean, from where this is going towards the attractions, needs to be bridges.
Right, so this is, if you think of the peninsula, we're only from the north side to about halfway into the peninsula with this design. Phase 2 will be once the bridge is removed, then we'll go from Surfside to the rest of the... So that still has to be designed. But the thought was, working with the, working with the community, is that the second phase towards the Texas State Aquarium, that's where there would be more features in the linear park canal to include kayaking or some type of water feature.
Yeah, so he has in the scope, there's bridges contemplated at Gulf Spray and Beach. And, uh, but-
And where, and the culverts at where?
It'll convert to pipes as it goes into the west street.
So you're just talking about the very end. The very north end is where you're gonna have pipes going in, but everywhere else where there's-
Correct. And bear in mind, this is very conceptual at this point. I think as we get into design, when we get probably 30% design, we'll have better definition on exactly what'll be there. But the idea is to have something that would be traversable to, like a kayak or something like that.
Kayak or a flat-bottom boat or something like that, similar to what they have in San Antonio.
We need to be clear for the record. So this phase, the phase that, um, the phase right now does not contemplate extreme boating. You could have some sections where you could put something in there. But if you look at, Jeff, I don't know if you have, if you look at this picture on PowerPoint, Slide number 2, it's a linear park canal. So, um, the first phase where there are no attractions, say the Texas State Aquarium or the Lexington, the thought here is more just a park-type setting, having the water feature, but having areas where residents and visitors could go next to the water, could sit next to it. There could be amphitheaters, something on the bank. The conversation we have with the community is Phase 2, where there's more real estate down by the aquarium. That's where it could be wider, and then you could do some type of feature like a kayaking and paddle boating.
Well, the idea is to have a conveyance in order to be able to access state hot funds, right? So-
Um, yeah, we're not accessing state hot funds. State hot funds, yeah, with this phase, not yet, Councilman. But sure, in the future.
Okay, that's why I'm saying, if there's any plan for development for hotels or some sort of attraction that you can get conveyance through this waterway is where you can access hot funds. But it has to be a conveyance. We have San Antonio to thank for that. I mean, that's how they got the Riverwalk, right? To get state hot taxes.
Uh, I don't believe so, Councilman.
Well, that's part of the legislation, is that that was included to where as long as there's a conveyance, there's transportation that you can include. That's why, that's why when we brought this with MIG, that there's some design here that includes conveyance from wherever it's located at so you can be eligible for state hot taxes. Whether you ask for it or not is up to you, right?
Right, well, the second page you would be-
Okay, so just, you know, that's why I asked about making sure there's bridges, not just culverts. And I'll, you know, I asked that you look at that closely. I mean, you, in terms of what you can do with that, I don't know what's gonna be designed over there. I don't know what's on the other end. You know, there's that, there's the RV park over there, right?
Yes, sir.
So I ask that you really look at that in terms of your design, make sure you have enough, you know, I mean, this is for drainage, obviously. But if you can access some funds to help pay for some of this, then, you know, by all means.
Okay. I can tell you, sir, that it is in the scope, to look at bridges at Gulf Spray and Beach.
Okay, great.
I'm gonna take, okay.
But I don't think these are the kind of bridges we were looking at previously, where you've got 14 feet of clearance.
No, no, no. I mean, I'm just looking for something that gets you some conveyance, similar to the boats that you use in San Antonio on the Riverwalk. You don't need very much space for those, and you don't need much depth, right? So as long as you have something that'll get you from point A to point B into the attraction, you're good.
Thank you, Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jeff, I wanna be clear, I understand this. So this, this engineering will cover all of this?
Some of what you're showing there are the road projects that are being done under separate contracts. So this is taking that channel.
So this doesn't have anything to do with the channel?
It does. It has the channel, has the park features.
Because I was adding this up, and this is $43 million. I couldn't imagine that this linear park is gonna cost $43 million. So, you know, Jeff, that's the thing I complain about over and over and over again. When you submit these to the council, we never get a map that delineates what it is we're talking about. And I'm a map kinda guy. And I just wish y'all would provide us with, I mean, these, these things like this are, you know, they're pretty, but they're meaningless. You know, I wanna see what it is we're looking at, what we're gonna spend the money on, what the engineering is gonna cover. Because I want the council to remember, to the, to date, we've spent just a few dollars shy of a million dollars on engineering fees on North Beach. With adding this 720, we're gonna be at $1.7 million in engineering fees. So my question is, is there any of that engineering that we've done in the past that we can utilize to help defer some of this cost?
And speaking with Scott, he thinks that maybe 40% of that, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say maybe a quarter of that is, is gonna be useful for the permitting and modeling. But a lot of it, of course, as you know, was dedicated towards looking at the navigation aspect, which we've moved away from.
Because, so is this 720,000 gonna be for the whole linear park? Or is it just gonna be the half that we're gonna do right now until TexDOT finishes the bridge?
It's just the part we're doing right now.
So we're gonna look at another seven, three-quarters of a million dollars to do the other half?
Well, we have the option of not doing it.
Yeah, the answer's yes, Councilman.
The answer's yes.
In that range. We don't know for sure, but it'd be in that range. The preliminary part of that seven, part of that nearly 1 million in design was to get us to this point. We looked at how much would the navigable canal cost? How much would a linear park canal? And how much would a new underground piping system cost? So the linear park canal was in the $20 million range, you know, for that project, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I support the project. I'm just trying to get my head around all the engineering fees and-
Yeah, those other ones are somewhat lost opportunity costs, if you will. I mean, we spent it to get to this point. Some of it can be used. This is now, take, this project may be about, if you think about half of the 20 million, about 10 million to get from the north side to about halfway into the peninsula. And so this will design that first half. We would need about 10 million or so to construct it.
And what's our projection date on that?
On the design, how long will the design take?
It's just through October.
October, sir. So, you know, so later this year, the design will be done, then we'll put it off a bid for construction. The good news is, is seed money there. We have close to, how much is it for?
9.5, sir.
9.5 million?
Yes, sir.
So we almost have enough monies identified that we've been budgeting over the past couple of years with the council's votes and support, including 5 million from the ARPER money, the recovery money. So we're nearly 100% funded for the first half of the linear park canal. Yes, sir.
Okay. Does any of that include the underground part we're gonna have to do as well?
Underground part?
Yeah. Aren't we gonna replace some of the underground?
Uh, yeah, I think so. In this first phase, it would be some underground replacement. Similar to what we're doing at the bathroom over there at the, at, is it Beach? Let's see, Gulf Spray. Surfside. At Surfside, we're having to redo some of the underground conveyance as well as part of that project.
Okay. Thank you very-
Uh, Councilwoman Campos.
That is a lot of numbers. And I was just, one of the things that stood out for me was the 23,000 for public meetings. What is, is that 23,000? That's, uh, page 16 of the, what is it? Summary of fees? Did y'all notice that 23,000? That seems pretty high for public meetings.
Yes, ma'am, and, um-
I mean, I want public meetings, but at 23,000?
Yes, ma'am, and Jeff and Josh can definitely talk to that. It's not uncommon that we see fees in that range for, at least for other projects that I've sat in on for, uh, public meetings. And, yeah, that seems expensive, but also to take into consideration mobilization and all the other efforts that's put into bringing those guys down to do in-person meetings. But what we find value in is ensuring that there's that transparency, that's a shared understanding, and more importantly, there's the opportunity to receive feedback from the community, and that feedback is actually incorporated into the plans that's actually produced as a result of those public meetings, so.
But it does seem pretty high.
And Ms. Campos, I'd also point out, when you're looking at the feedback breakdown, anywhere you see allowance, that's a budgetary figure, and it's paid time and materials. And so it can be more, it can be less. It depends on what we ask for. So they're engaged as we need. If we want them to do more of these meetings, the cost is higher. If we feel like we can be once and done, it could be lower, in which case those savings can be applied elsewhere.
I appreciate that. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that I noticed that, that this is partially funded, I think, $5 million from the American Rescue Plan of 2021. So thank you to, for that.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, that's all. All of our questions, Mr. Edmonds. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 9? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 9. We have a motion.
Thank you, yes, we do. I was just checking. And a second, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 10, and our last item of the day, is a motion awarding a construction contract to JE Construction Services, LLC, for reconstruction of Carroll Lane from Holly Road to Dead End with new asphalt pavement and utility improvements.
Mayor, I'd move for approval, but I still wanna make a comment.
Okay, go ahead and make your comment.
You know, thank you. I know since this was part of the 2020 bond project, when we chose our Dura, was that part of that at the time when we were pre-qualifying or going through the same process where we're-
Exactly. That was the exact same process we're doing now with the Bond 22 we did with the Bond 20.
And, you know, when we talked here last week, we had discussed, you know, and Peter, I don't know if they mentioned it to you. I know I hadn't, is that if we know a project needs to get done, why don't we pre-engineer it before the bond project so that way we can set up a time to award the construction contract? Because I've had people pulling on me for two years on this deal. You know, so that way we can, we can put the project out for bid for construction shortly thereafter the bond has been approved. Because we know we have to fix the street anyway. And I think that that would've put us, you know, possibly, maybe, six to nine months ahead of time, whereas the public is, like, right now. I mean, we've, and then I know we're waiting on Airport Road. So I'm glad, I know that neighborhood has their own Facebook page. And I posted that it was on the agenda, and I got a bunch of high fives and a bunch of people that are really excited about it. So I remember knocking on doors in that neighborhood, and one particular resident said, "If you'll fix that street, I'll vote for you." And this was back in 2018. So, so anyway, yeah, I'm very excited that we're doing this. But as I know Jim has said when he was on the campaign trail, we gotta figure out a way to get that out there faster. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Campos.
I just wanted to make sure that in the plans, there would be trees included. I didn't see anything about trees, so. Just wanna point it out, and hopefully we can include that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, I'd appreciate it.
Councilman Hernandez.
Well, Councilman, but I feel your pain because I, heck, Rodfield Extension isn't even out to bid yet. Or has it? Next month, right?
Yeah, next month.
Next month. So you're ahead of where I'm at, so. So much more frustration on my part. Isn't that right, Jeff?
I have detected some of that, sir, yes.
Yes. Not to mention, Lipes just went to bid. Did it close? All right, all right.
Councilman Hernandez.
I'm just comparing that, you know, the complaints he got, you know, all right.
Well, I would follow up on his comment. Now, it wasn't totally intentional, but some of our projects have worked that way. Because you might remember, we came with a much larger bond proposal for Bond 20, but that also contemplated implementing the tax increase that was approved as part of Bond 18. And of course, this is in the early stages of COVID, and we concluded, yeah, it's not a real good time to implement that tax increase. So to get that bond to fit within the, our funding ability at the time, we pulled the construction out of some of those projects. So it went as design only with Bond 20. For example, Bill with Pool was that way. And that allows us to go to construction much sooner after the referendum with the construction dollars. So that is a model that can, can work and help you get, but it winds up putting the things either A, on a prior bond for design or funding the design through another funding source.
Well, considering the pool got bid and done before Rodfield, and Rodfield was funded first.
Well, we were also focused on the pool that we didn't get to Rodfield.
It was designed already, right?
No, it was the same year.
Correct, it was designed with the Bond 20.
Right, but so the Rodfield was designed and billed in 20. So, well, I'm getting off topic.
You are.
You are. Yeah, you are.
Way off topic.
All right.
Okay, so with regards to Carroll Lane, does this go all the way to the school?
This does not go, now, there's undeveloped property there. So ultimately, Carroll Lane is anticipated to extend and connect with Castoritz when that property develops. And there's a trail that we've received a grant for that's gonna go up and connect up to the high school. So that is contemplated. So part of the trail, the part down towards Holly is included in this project. And the other part that'll go up to the new high school is gonna be grant-funded and done with another contract.
Okay, so I guess it seems like we missed an opportunity here to extend it all the way to the school to try and relieve some of the traffic off Castoritz and Saratoga, well, Castores.
We're gonna be asking for Bond 24 candidates real soon.
Well, a little late for this one, but I guess, I guess we just missed the opportunity, and I think it would have been, you know, it would have been much appreciated by the residents out there to be able to drop off their kids on the backside instead of having to go traverse Castores and make a left-hand turn against traffic. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilman Klein. Or, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Campos, is your light on? No, Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick comment. Both are positive. I see the bicycle lanes are included in this project. I think that's a good idea. I'd encourage that in future projects as well. I see as well that you have a 13-month timeframe for completion of the project. That's very encouraging as well. I just would urge that to be kind of the model going forward. Thanks.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you. I'm surprised Councilman Hernandez didn't bring up the bidding process, considering some of the numbers were so extraordinarily different. So I'm kind of shocked that you weren't discussing that. Obviously, they were a little bitter. What makes just, you know, I'd rather y'all go out there and explain this to everyone than me, but I'm gonna ask a question so that I can do that, because we're the complaint department, right? What makes Bay Limited, just using them because they're a good company, and they have very good strong record, the ability to do traffic at, I can't remember which one was which, but the numbers go from like 8, 8,500 to 40 grand, you know, per unit. And is it just because they just have everything in place? But what, what, what is it that they do better to shave off 32 grand in that, in that spot?
You know, I'd.
Because that's a big number.
I wish I could answer your question. I really don't have tremendous visibility into how they price their bids on individual pay items. And they're, what you'll typically see is a lot more variability on those individual pay items than you'll see over the overall bids. So the overall bids will group fairly tight, but individual pay items will vary dramatically.
Been like this since I've been on here. It's so weird when, you know, it's phase one, one company's 330 grand, the other one's, you know, 820. It just, it's very hard to, you know, explain that to people.
Some of it can be just the way they account for their costs internally. Some of it can be gamesmanship. And if it gets to be something where we think is a big risk factor, we have disqualified a bidder for that, for submitting an unbalanced bid, so.
But they were good bids. It just.
I think they're good bids. I don't think these are unbalanced. I just think that's just variations and.
Lots of local groups.
Account for those costs. And then sometimes you'll see people are really not very aggressively bidding on a project, so sometimes you'll see bids come in very high where, you know, they'll put something in.
Sure.
It's like buying a lottery ticket.
Looked like one of them was doing that.
That happens.
Well, thank you for your answer.
Councilman Roy.
I just had a question. I was trying to figure out, what's the distance from, I'm sorry, what's the distance from the section when it ends with the bike trail, and then it goes to the multi-use trail to the end? From the, so the blue line?
I think that is about a quarter mile, but that continues on off the sheet. And that's the multi-use trail that's gonna be grant-funded.
And the multi-use trail will be lit? It will have improved lighting on it? Because I noticed in the bid, it talked about improved lighting. I just was.
That's on, within the project limits, so when it goes beyond the project limits, I don't have any answer to that, because that's, that's a future project that's being done with this grant. It hasn't actually.
Okay, it says future off-road multi-use. Yeah, I just think that would be good if we, when we get to that point, just to consider some lighting there.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that, because it will be going through that undeveloped land where
Yeah.
there's no light. That's a good point.
Okay, that was my only question. It's a great project.
Thank you, Councilman. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. And our last item, actually a lot earlier, is our legislative update. Do we have Wendy?
Yeah, Wendy's on WebEx, so just give her a second to log on up.
Okay.
Wendy, we're ready to roll when you are.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Okay, good. Yes, we can. We can hear and see.
Excellent.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm gonna speed through these really quickly, and then I know that everybody's got one foot out the door, and there's a lot going on up at the Capitol, so I want to get back to that. The bills that we want to watch, last week, I told you guys about HB 2606, which was the port bill that had economic development language in it. And so what, we were, we worked with the Port Association. They were actually really very cooperative. And we managed to mirror the language that Senator Hinojosa helped us get into the Senate companion bill, so that while it allows the port to do business with historically underutilized businesses, it does limit them to what they can do in their maritime activity. So that's a win for us, and I think that we can live with the bill moving forward. I'm gonna keep an eye on it, but we'll see what happens. It is still pending in the Transportation Committee, but I believe that we'll probably move forward. I'm gonna skip over the preemption bill really quickly, because I'm gonna come back to that. There's a lot going on on that one today. And get down to the beach bills. I know those beach bills are something that we're all very concerned about. The close the beach bill is SB 2550. Just wanted to let you guys know, there's been no movement on that. It has been referred to committee, but it has not been set for a hearing yet. The further we get along in the process, the less likely it will be set for a hearing, so keep your fingers crossed on that. And then last Friday, I sent you guys, I sent counsel an email on HB 3859. This was a bill that is between the City of Galveston and the General Land Office, the GLO. So what it was, it wasn't necessarily a bill that closed the beaches. The problem was is that I thought that their language was a little bit awkward on it. Originally, I had dropped a card of support for our friends in Galveston. I had a conversation with Chairman Hunter, and he suggested that we bring GLO into the discussion and find out exactly what the intention was there. So we had a meeting late yesterday afternoon in Chairman Hunter's office, and he requested that Galveston and the General Land Office bracket that bill specifically to Galveston. And that's exactly what they agreed to do. So we don't need to worry about HB 3859 anymore. Even if it does move forward, it's going to be bracketed to Galveston. And if we ever decide that we like that bill and we want to be part of it, then all we have to do is remove the bracket. So that's good news on that. Let me move forward to the annexation bills really quickly and speed through those. We have quite a few of them that are actually being heard, annexation and development bills that are being heard. They're not some of the major ones, but we're keeping an eye on those, and I will be dropping cards of support. The one that I really want you guys to notice is the last one that I have on my list there, which is SB 2038 and HB 5217. This is a bill that will limit our ETJ, our extraterritorial jurisdiction. And right now, it is set at five miles outside of the city limits is our ETJ. And that's, and this would limit it to half a mile. We fear that this would damage the IDAs, the industrial district agreements that we have with our friends that are lining all of our industrial friends over on the port. And so what we requested, when the Senate bill was heard a couple of weeks ago, we requested some language be submitted that would exempt the IDAs. And we weren't successful on that one, so we're going to the House. I talked again with Chairman Hunter and Chairman Gualdo about this, how we'd like to have this substitute language that would exempt IDAs. It wouldn't, I'm not asking them their bill to go away. I'm asking them to exempt the IDAs. The good news is I found out that Speaker Phelan also has IDAs in his area, so I think that we have a good shot of getting our substitute language into the bill. And so that's that. Going back to annexation, or the preemption bill, sorry. For the past four, four and a half hours, they had the HB 2127, which is the really bad preemption bill that I've been warning you guys about for a couple of months. Mayor Gualdo sent letters of opposition when it was in its, when it was heard over in the House. It did come out of the State Affairs Committee in the House. It is over in the Senate. The Senate bill has not, it's been heard in the Senate bill, but it's still sitting, it's still pending. But it is being heard right now, as we speak, on the floor of the House for its first reading. They've been debating this bill for the last four, four and a half hours, and there's probably been over 100 amendments that have just been systematically shot down. This is such a terrible bill, because basically what it's going to do is turn home rule cities like ours into general law cities. And it's going to open up the floodgates of litigation. And so we're working on that, the next steps, we believe, on this one. Just so you know, we're not alone in our fight on this. Every city in TML is fighting this bill and trying to get some kind of language in there that would help cities out. I will say that they have managed to get right-to-cure language in there. And basically what that means is that before someone can sue the city, then they have to notify the city that their ordinance is in conflict with state law. And so the city has the opportunity to remedy the ordinance before they get sued. So, anyway, that's where we're at on those bills. We have 40 more days. And it's gonna be Fast and Furious. I will do my best to continue to offer you guys your Friday meetings. And I stand ready for any questions that you may have about these or any other bills that you might have.
Councilman Klein.
Yeah, hi Wendy. This is Jim Klein. I just wanted to follow up on HB 3859 again. I think, you know, I had a conversation about this by email. I was in a conversation with the Surf Riders Foundation Local Chapter here based in Corpus Christi. They're very concerned about this bill. I'm happy to hear that it's limited to Galveston. I feel for our neighbors up in Galveston, especially those who who support the idea of public access to beaches. But I'm happy to hear that it's limited to Galveston. I hope that it remains limited as the least of all possible evils.
Well, yes, sir. And thank you for writing me on that. And please share my contact information with anybody at the Surf Riders Club that would like to talk to me about this bill. I thought everybody had my phone number. So, but yeah, it's, I think it's, it's, it's good. They're getting what they want, and they feel like it's important for their area, and it's not gonna affect our area, so that's good news.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Barad.
Wendy, maybe I missed something, but what about tax prohibition of taxpayer-funded lobbyists?
That's a terrible bill.
I know it's terrible, but what's going on with it?
We agree.
It's a terrible bill, because it would not allow for us to be even members of like the Texas Municipal League. It would have basically prohibited a city from hiring a lobbyist, like we have Snapper Car. It would, it could potentially even prohibit you from hiring someone like me to lobby on your behalf. And so I know that there's been a lot of amendments. It did have a hearing this last week in the House, but it has not been heard in the Senate, so that's the good news on that.
Thank you.
Wendy, I think that's all. Thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it very much, and we appreciate your hard work up there.
Thank you.
Okay, Peter, that's it. Okay, there being no further business, I adjourn this meeting. Well, I guess, can I still make a comment, even though I adjourned? Rebecca, to you. It's about public comment.
Are we still on camera?
We are.
Okay, we are.
So I noticed, and I'm sorry I adjourned before, but we receive, or you receive emails, the City Secretary's Office or Norma receives emails that you guys print out?
Yes.
So what I'd like to suggest is that, and I don't know, are these emails being addressed?
They're, the emails are basically like public comment in person, so they're just being forwarded to the governing body.
Okay, so, and we don't have to necessarily, well, I guess, so Miles, can we address them? This is my point, is something, would we be able to say, okay, Naomi Lindner, she sent this email asking, is there a line item for maintaining the Harbor Bridge lights? Can that be forwarded to the right person to reply? And say, Naomi, blah, blah, yes, no, maybe, whatever, or not, because it's public comment?
The process we adopted on written comments was to put them in the record and make them available for City Council or staff to be able to review. So they're available for review in the, in this. But, but what we do with them, that, that process is, is, hasn't. We don't have a process for necessarily considering them to be questions to staff. We, that we put those in the, in the minutes for later review.
Yeah, they are attached to the minutes for the record.
They're attached to the minutes, right, but I'm talking about response. So are you just saying because there is no official process or protocol, there can't be? Or is that just not established by this body and needs to be?
There are, there are processes for creating questions, imposing questions to, to the city, to management that will be dealt with, and that's a city, that's a staff issue. However, the requests to the City Council, which are the, what's put in the minutes, because those are the submitted items, those are available for review and are in the minutes. And they can be reviewed by the entire council.
No, no, yeah, I'm talking about replying. Is that something that can be done? I guess it's pretty, it's pretty much that simple. Can, can these emails be replied to? Is that allowable?
You, you could, or, you know, any, any, any person at the city could legally have a process for replying to those types of emails. But keep in mind, those are, those are posed to the council itself.
Right. Okay, so that, and in the spirit of time, I want to discuss how we can possibly address these in some, some form or fashion that is simple and just easy to do. And there are more questions that would go behind that. If we get 100 of these, you know, I mean, that's different. But anyway, I just wanted to address that. So Rebecca, maybe we can have a conversation about it. Ms. Campos, did you have a comment?
You bring up a very valid point, which is when, for example, if that person that sent the email had been here making public comment, we could direct their comments to Peter Zanoni, right? That, at that time.
Right, or actually the team members.
Or the team member.
The team members are either in the back or listening, or, so they, they generally get in touch with the people on their way out, or we'll call them.
But, but the only recourse that we have is only to address it to you, so that it can't, and then you forward it to whatever department needs to address it, right?
Right, and just to remind us, anybody can call a department. They don't have to come to City Council to say that, you know, the water was turned off too late. So they can call 311, they can call the director, they can call the city manager. And be, you know, they can obviously come and talk to the council as well, but there's numerous ways to get information from the city and get requests. The easiest one is call 311.
Okay, well, just on this case, she happened to also send a copy to me, and then I went ahead and sent it to Constance. I'm still waiting for a response.
Yeah, Constance and I talked about the response this morning. So the lights that are being installed with the Harbor Bridge, Harbor Bridge construction are part of the construction, part of the original design and the ongoing construction. So, and I'm gonna compare it to the old Harbor Bridge. So the lights are being paid for by Tech Dot and the funding sources they have for the bridge. It's not, it's not like a amenity, it's, or it's not an augmentation. It's part. It's not, it's not like a amenity. It's, or it's not an augmentation. It's part of the construction. The future maintenance will be Tech Dot's responsibility.
Okay.
And I do believe though, they have like a 25-year warranty with Flatiron Dragados. So the, the lights will be warranted through Tech Dot. The city has no responsibility for maintenance in any way for the lighting, for the lights.
Wow. Well, I think Naomi got her answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Life is made easy with 311, a fast and reliable way to report a problem or get information on city services. Everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call 311 or download the MyCC311 app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. 311 provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with 311. Download MyCC311 app today.
The Junior Olympics is happening April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. So last year, when we pulled it off in, in 2022, it was an amazing opportunity to bring it back to Corpus Christi after being gone for 30 years. Nowadays, to bring Junior Olympics back into Corpus, it's, it's awesome because you don't know, you might be looking at a future world champion. And now they get to go in there, get that experience to be able to perform in front of thousands of people and then have that memory and that experience for the rest of their life to talk about.
You're going to be seeing kids from age all the way to age of 16 and for them going, leaving it all in the ring and duking it out. You're preparing for the best and of course, you want to meet the best and you're going to meet the best in there. It's got to be conditioning from the basics all the way learning your, your combos.
The excitement that the crowd gives, takes a lot of courage to be able to step in the ring and do that, knowing you're going to battle against somebody and it's going to be one winner. And it's all on you, giving it 100%.
And to show that courage and that they can, they have that will, that it can be done, it's a whole different, I mean, that's what you want to experience. And they'll learn something and meaningful and there's something going to take with them for the rest of their life.
This year, we're looking to break records. We want over 500 registered boxers to attend and we're expecting over 5,000 to 6,000 people in attendance for the three days. So it's a big impact for the city and we love that because of the fact that it's, it's a part of our community that we're here. I would like for you to come out, show your support to all these amateur boxers that have been training hard, get some ringside action. Again, you never know who the next professional boxer that's going to be performing here today that you'll see later in life.
The City of Corpus Christi has been working hard for the future. To ensure we have a confident supply of clean water, we've secured four water sources for our community. But it's up to you to maintain our water supply through effective and efficient use, limiting your outdoor watering, installing modernized plumbing, and making smart landscaping choices. Together, we can keep our water resources secure for our growing city.
Did you know you can submit a request for city services in just a few minutes using your phone? Download the free MyCC311 app to get started. Quickly report issues such as street maintenance, water or gas issues, garbage pickup, code violations, or animal care services. The MyCC311 app is easy to use. Upload information and photos, identify the location, hit submit, and you're all done. Life made easy with 311. Download the MyCC311 app today.
We've all dealt with the hassles of traveling. Traffic, long lines, security, layoffs. And what if there was a smarter way? When you fly out of Corpus Christi International Airport, you get all the modern amenities you love with a stress-free convenience of flying locals. So you can skip the hassle and get right to the good parts, taking off and returning home. Fly smarter, not harder, at flyccia.com.
When emergencies strike, stay informed with Reverse Alert. Everything from incoming severe weather, traffic alerts, police and fire activity, industry alerts, and citywide information. Reverse Alert will provide you time-sensitive information to keep you safe. Signing up is a fast and easy process. Text BEREADYCCNC to 888-777. Or visit cctexas.com/alertsignup. Choose to receive notifications by phone call, text, or email. And with fully customizable options, you pick what notifications you want to receive. And you can designate what hours of the day that you don't want to be disturbed. Stay informed, stay aware, stay alert. Sign up for Reverse Alert today.
Beach to Bay is back. Join us Saturday, May 20th for the 46th Annual Beach to Bay Relay Marathon. Participate with over 8,000 runners in a 26.2-mile six-leg event. Runners start in the sands of North Padre Island, cross the JFK Causeway, travel through Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, and finish along Arsenic Shoreline Boulevard. For the first time, you can choose from three separate events to participate. Run as a team in the six-person relay, split up the run with your partner in the two-person relay, or challenge yourself and run the entire 26.2-mile marathon solo. Register online at beechtobayrelay.com. Beach to Bay starts at 7:00 AM on Saturday, May 20th. Come be a part of Corpus Christi's biggest relay marathon tradition. Join family, friends, and the community at Beach to Bay 2023.